Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Eugene Planning Commission to order. As with most of our meetings, we open with a period for public comment. I have one request to speak. If there's anyone else in the audience that would like to speak, please fill out a green form and give it to staff or myself. With that, we'll ask for our speaker to come forward, Mr. Paul Conte.
Good morning. My name is Paul Conte. I live at 1461 West 10th Avenue. I'm speaking as an individual. Speaking about the code amendments, just wanted to point out a couple of things. In your AIS, you have some information I sent you about the summary of the code standards for maximum building height in all of the zones, including the overlay zones and special area zones, and then a first cut at a chart that kind of gives you some sense of where there might be impact if they're adjacent zones. So, really encourage you to -- I know you have to kind of marshal your resources in terms of what you work on, and it certainly might be necessary to take this in a couple of stages, but the problem of inappropriate height of development adjacent to lower-scale development, particularly single-family, not just R1, but zones like SJW, is, you know, exists throughout the city. So, to the degree that you can address it in this round, I would encourage you to broaden the scope of the solution you come up with. I also hand it out to you something that's a very, very specific item, and it's still waiting -- I just sent this in to the planning director and PDD director this morning after taking a weekend off from land use stuff. But last week, Larry Robideau described what appears to be a misinterpretation of the application of that seven-foot bonus height to residential structures if they have a slope of roof of a certain slope. Those commissioners who were around at the time, the minor code amendments, who remember that discussion. And I'll just point out to you, I was very involved in that specific amendment. And if you, again, can incorporate it into this round, really what's necessary, at least initially, is just a technical correction to make sure that's being applied correctly. It was always intended to apply to the main dwellings in the residential zones, not to secondary dwellings or accessory dwellings. And that could be very easily fixed with a small piece of code because the term "main dwelling" does apply in the categories under maximum height. And that's about it. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Conte. Our next order of business is to review and approve meeting minutes for October 25. With that, I'll open to comments or corrections or suggestions from staff or commissioners. Those in favor of accepting the minutes as written?
Aye.
Minutes are accepted.
I wanted to note that I abstained because I wasn't actually in the audience.
Very good, Commissioner Bakers. Thank you for the clarification.
I was in the audience, not on the --
Right. With one abstention.
So you can have as many as possible.
Our next order of business is the deliberations for the Orchard Street Roehouse zone change appeal. And I believe we all have had, I don't know, staff has forwarded the revised text to us. I guess I'll throw this to staff for an opening.
Okay. Steve. My name is Steve Brooks with the planning department. So, we forwarded on Wednesday a draft final order kind of based on the conversations we had at the last deliberations. And I guess the, if it works for you, we're just going to go ahead and walk through it. It's, you know, there's four assignments of error, and based on the discussions at the last deliberations, we made some changes from how was, the AIS was originally written up to, in essence, to overturn the hearing's official decision, say that he erred on, and there's three counts, and we can walk through those and how they, and we can walk through how they've been addressed in this draft, and then see if there's any comments on that, and see if that's still the, if those capture what you said. So, if you'd like to, we can start on page, start on page two. It's the first assignment error, under A, and that's, the decision is not consistent with the Metro Plan Land Use and Residential Housing Policy 825. And so it steps through this, what the hearings official said, and then when you get to the bottom of the, of page three and the top of page four is kind of where the crux of it is. And if you go, actually, if you go to the top of page four, it basically says that it fails to meet additional requirements, that for purposes of the Metro Plan, the density cap, just as far as low-density residential, the hearing's official, the cap was fine, but then it goes on to say that, when you look at the refinement plan closer, that the, that the zone change will increase residential density beyond what would typically be allowed outright on the existing R1-zone subject property, and thus conflicts with the Fairmount Special Area Study. And it also addresses that the, that it also didn't meet the diagram text to preserve and maintain the single-family character which currently exists in the area. And so basically, the policy said that appropriate zoning would need to be applied, and then the, this is outlined through the refi ------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------ Are there any suggested edits or concerns with the text as we've presented it?
Commissioner Duncan.
On page four, top paragraph, it's me and my "it," second to the last line, it says, nevertheless findings that it provides relevant text. I assume you mean policy 825, is it?
Correct.
Okay. Could we just change that, I think, just for clarity?
So we will replace the word "it" with "Metro Plan Policy 825."
Are there any other questions or comments or corrections from staff? Let's go on from here, then.
We can move on to the assignment of error 1B, which was that even if the sole measure of Metro Plan consistency is based on density, the decision's density cap at 14 units per acre is not consistent with the Metro Plan. Maybe you want to take a --
Yeah, well, you know, I think, I think the, the density question is perhaps, you know, resolved, and again, is the basis for reversal under the refinement plan, not so much as it relates to the Metro Plan. So there were a number of additional policies and findings addressed in the appeal with regard to the Metro Plan that, at least as we gathered from your discussion, didn't serve as a basis for denial. So we're finding essentially those are not applicable. We walked through in the findings, sort of the, the method of density calculation, and it's kind of a prelude to the, to the findings about the refinement plan. But here, just to be clear, the, the appeal issue is with respect to the Metro Plan, not the refinement plan.
Wait, say that again?
Well, this, so again, it says, even if the sole measure of Metro Plan consistency is based on density, the decision's density cap at 14 units per acre is not consistent with the Metro Plan. So just, again, recognizing that appeal issue one's really about compliance with the Metro Plan, and we deal with the sort of the, the substance of your reversal under the second assignment.
I'm not sure I understand what this sentence said. We're in the last paragraph, three, four, five, six, line down. It says, while this zone change is found below to violate the refinement plan policy. I'm not sure what that means.
Well, again, I think, I think we're forecasting, you know, at this point in, in the final order, that, that land use policy three, that, that the proposed zone change would violate that by allowing a net increase of one dwelling unit, but that with the cap at 14 units per acre, the zone change will remain consistent with the low-density residential designation.
It literally just means later in this decision.
Okay.
You could reword it if you like.
Okay.
Maybe a comma after "found" and a comma after "below."
Maybe as two sentences would be better, too.
I read it a couple of times, and it was just, I know somebody else may have to deal with this later on, but it was, I had a hard time trying to understand where it was going.
If you made it two sentences, it might be a little bit too clear. So you just say, this zone change is found below to violate the refinement plan policy by allowing it, and you say --
Say however, comma however, the density, et cetera. Let me read it back. So, we could revise it to state that this zone change is found below to violate the refinement plan policy by allowing a potential net increase of one additional dwelling unit, comma, however, the density overlay imposed by the hearing's official would still ensure compliance with the property's low-density residential designation, dot, dot, dot.
I'm not sure that however, however is even actually needed, because all you're just saying is, the density overlay would ensure compliance with the properties.
And is the "found below" referring to assignment of error two?
Yes.
Why don't we just say that? Well, the zone change found in second assignment of error. Would that clear that up a little bit? Sorry for being so snikety on this, but --
It's fine.
Somebody else may have to read this and understand it.
Are there any other suggested edits or changes, commissioners?
I'm still confused by this one, because I'm trying to figure out --
Commissioner Baker, go ahead.
Sorry. Trying to figure out what's -- okay, so we're, we're trying to say that the hearing's official didn't err by this, in this section. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, okay. I, I'm okay with the changes. I still think it's confusing, and it's not very, yeah, it's a little confusing in this set, the same, this paragraph here, because you don't really understand that until you get to the end, that we're saying that it's, we agree.
Right.
I'm fine. I'll read it.
So with that, we're turning to page five, the second assignment of error, where the appellant asserts that the decision misconstrues the meaning of single-family character. And, and so here, we've, we've made findings which find that the hearing's official did err by failing to consider additional legislative context in the refinement plan, particularly the goal statements, testimony from the neighborhood, which, which basically supports the interpretation that, that it, the area is predominantly single-family detached character, and, and that the zoning would not ensure that, that that character is preserved and maintained as required by the plan.
Yeah, I'll just bring this up on both A and B. Here's what's been annoying at me since we met last time. In the OBO matter, we found that the hearings official erred based on a Metro Policy 813. In this case, we're finding that the hearings official erred on two refinement plan policies. Maybe one's the policy three, and the other one is, I guess it's the land use diagram text. And the way the hearings official structured his decision, by capping the density, he maintained, or at least in his view, maintained compliance with Metro Plan Policy, as we're suggesting here in 820, concurring with 825, if that's what you meant. The question I have, the overreaching question I have, is, does this constitute a conflict between the refinement plan and the Metro Plan? And if it does, does the Metro Plan, as we've been experienced now, in other cases, override then the refinement plan policies? And by bringing, by capping the density to bring it in compliance with the Metro Plan, do we have this conflict that needs to be resolved towards the Metro Plan? See what I'm getting at?
I do. I don't believe that, that your findings on the refinement plan would reflect any sort of conflict with the Metro Plan, that, that in effect, you're, you're stating that the cap would maintain consistency with the maximum density allowed in LDR. But there's more specific refinement plan provisions that are perhaps more restrictive in this case, that essentially any increase in, in the density here is, it can be found to violate a refinement plan policy in a particular area, sort of a more geographic, specific reflection of the Metro Plan without being inconsistent with it.
Yeah, and so even though the refinement plan is more restrictive than the Metro Plan policy, that's not a conflict?
Correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Baker.
A couple of things. I would like to suggest that we change the wording on, you have A, because the problem always has been, it's maintaining single-family character which currently exists. So when you say decision misconstrues the meaning of single-family character which currently exists, I'm tempted to insert that into the --
So the statement's taken directly from the appellant's written statement, and so we were not attempting to paraphrase or revise it there.
Okay, so that's the reason it was not -- and the other, I want to just clarify the question. The, the Metro Plan sets up these broad designations. It says that you would allow density up to a certain threshold. Doesn't mean that density always has to be that threshold. It says that, isn't, is my interpretation reasonable? In other words, theoretically, one could create a zone that, or you might have a property depending on its orientation or shape or something, that would not allow you to meet the maximum density. So, the Metro Plan sets up broad designations for areas. It doesn't mean that every property is going to be able to meet the maximum density allowed in the Metro Plan.
And do you mean to achieve its maximum, or that, that it may only be able to achieve a lesser density? That's correct. There, and in low-density residential, there is no minimum, I think so.
Just to, because we have a lot of these issues coming to you within Vision Eugene, it's worth noting, though, that you wouldn't want to have, and I don't think legally you could have, refinement plans all to cover all the city, that limit density to far below or even much below that which is allowed in the designations, because all of our inventories and our expectations for what we can do within the city are based on Metro Plan densities. So, there are always going to be properties which, for whatever reason, can't achieve maximum densities, and we may even have areas of the city which are limited to densities below the maximum allowed in the Metro Plan. But we need to be very careful about that to ensure that overall, within the city, the maximums, the densities that we're counting on as we count likely growth are going to happen or can happen. And we don't count maximum density in the Metro Plan as what we expect to get in 20 years, but it's important to kind of watch that.
That's always making me nervous.
Okay.
This, this one doesn't make me nervous for that, and, and along those lines.
Okay.
Yeah, this is just to clarify. My understanding from Envision Eugene is, you know, we weren't expecting to hit the maximum density in zones. We were expecting to hit something higher than it currently exists, you know, certain thresholds, but --
It's largely based on what we've actually seen happen, which, you know, doesn't come, doesn't equal highest densities allowed.
Right.
2B?
Right. So, beginning at the bottom of page five, second assignment of error, section B, decision's conclusion that Roehouse zoning R1.5 does not increase density is not supported by relevant probative and substantial evidence in the record. And so here's where we walk through the density calculation and the additional factors that, that you raised in discussion last time that should be considered, which effectively limit the density that could occur outright on the subject property as it, as it stands today. And so this, again, is, is one of your sort of primary bases for reversal of the hearing's official's decision. It also provides some discussion of, of arguments in the appeal that, that we didn't discuss in any great detail, having to do with the latter part of, of land use policy three about not increasing commercial intensity. This, this was presented to you in a prior agenda item summary, but we didn't get into the details. So, if there are any questions or concerns about that, or the density language, I'd be happy to hear from you.
Yeah, just a question. So, was the, was the issue of, was the issue of commercial intensity raised by the appellant under this section on single-family character? Let me, my, my only concern was whether this should be pulled and set into a separate, you know, subsection or something, because it's not really related to the, the appellate's --
Again, this is, this is set out under second of assignment error B, as presented in the appellant's written statement. They provided then an exhibit, some additional writ materials to their statement that it addresses this particular issue, and sort of separate from the character question, but more related to the refinement plan policy about dens, you know, increasing residential density or commercial intensity. So, this deals with the last part of that phrase.
And I think the, kind of the, the, I guess, the key findings there are on the, in the second paragraph on page six, kind of starting after the underlying Metro Plan and Fairmount SAS, starting the, with however, the planning commission concludes that he erred, in this case by failing to consider additional factors which typically limit the density. And it talks about lot configuration, minimum setbacks, lot size, and that kind of thing. And that's kind of, I guess, the key, key issue.
Mr. Lydic.
So, in the future, when the R1.5 overlay zone is applied, is applied to be applied somewhere else, and opponents come in and say, well, look at the existing lot sizes of the existing lots, of the frontage, their configuration, their setbacks, is, is this going to set the precedent, then, for pretty much stopping the application of 1.5 anywhere else in the city if those same arguments are made?
Not necessarily, unless there's a, I mean, this is really based on policy three, you know, saying that there, that zone changes to increase residential density are not supported by this plan, unless the refinement plan had something, I guess, similar or that, that limited that. But otherwise, I think it's based primarily on that policy.
I think it's focused to this particular area where the refinement plan language applies.
And as I recall, the hearing's official said, is not supported by does not necessarily mean does not preclude. And that was kind of his argument. Okay, now this one. Emily's comfortable with all of this.
Yes, I am.
Commissioner Duncan.
Just a comment on that. I thought the staff did a good job of sort of capturing the essence of this argument as it applies to this area under the Fairmount SAS land policy, or land use policy three. So I thought you captured it, because I know there was a discussion about more of that single-family character, and I, I'm happy to see we got away from that, really dealt with sort of that physical, the physical capabilities of the site.
Any comments or corrections for this area?
If not, I took a minute while you were moving on to mess with that paragraph that was kind of troubling you.
Is that a technical --
Yeah. It's a legal term. And I'd be happy to read it back to you and see if that makes you more comfortable, and if so, I could just, you know, edits. So that was the final paragraph on page four. That did begin with the word however. So I'm just going to read it to you, how I rewrote it, starting with the beginning of the paragraph. Later in this final order, the planning commission concludes that for this particular area, Fairmount SAS land use policy three requires closer consideration of the net difference between the number of dwelling units that would typically be allowed outright in the R1-zone without further discretionary land use approvals, the parenthetical, compared to that of the proposed R-1.5 zone, parenthetical. Under assignment of error number two, the planning commission finds that this zone change violates the refinement plan policy by allowing a potential net increase of one additional dwelling unit, period. Here, with respect to consistency with the Metro Plan, the planning commission finds that the density overlay imposed by the hearing's official would ensure compliance with the property's low-density residential designation. Continue. So just to clarify where we're talking about later, the refinement plan policy versus Metro Plan policy here. Is that helpful?
Yes.
Okay.
Are there any other comments or questions from commissioners? Commissioner Belcher.
Well, I think we did a better job than we have in the past of actually looking at the intent of the refinement plan here and trying to meet the intent as specified by the original writers. I think we've done a good job.
I guess I'd also like to thank staff for a very capable job, given the amount of discussion and input that you received and the timely turnaround of the document. I really appreciate that, and compliment you on your, on your work.
Thank you.
I guess I'm looking at the table for a motion.
Commissioner Lydic.
Yeah, I moved in that we approved the final order findings and conclusions of the, of the Eugene Planning Commission Orchard Street Roehouses Z11-1. It's modified today.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, put forward for discussion. Ready for a vote? Those in favor signify by saying aye, raising your hand.
Aye.
Goes against? Carrie Taig? No.
Just as a request, we've had three appeals now, the AT&amp;T Tower, the OBO, density, and now this one. Would appreciate it if we could be kept in the loop, at least I've got an interest in how, if these are appealed, and how those appeals may progress. I'm just interested in how that all turns out.
Just a quick update. The AT&amp;T cell tower decision has been appealed to Luba by AT&amp;T, no, excuse me, by the neighbors. AT&amp;T has intervened, so in other words, they are appearing to defend your conditional approval, and the city's filed its record at Luba. So briefing will begin, and it'll be a couple of months before we really know much about that one. We've had indications that there will be an appeal on OBO We've had indications that there will be an appeal on OBO, but we haven't received a formal Luba appeal on that one yet. So.
Okay.
Uh, the neighbors.
So with that, I guess we'll, we'll close this portion of the deliberation, the meeting and the deliberation. And once again, I wanted to thank staff. Our next order of business is to welcome a new planning commissioner. Emily? Emily? Did you let?
Oh. Sorry.
I thought she was going to.
It's me. Steve, you don't have to do the dishes anymore.
There you go.
I hope he didn't quit already.
He might be rethinking his oath. Probably, maybe he should forget to give him the rest here.
So why don't you sit here, Christie can sit there. Is Christie at the table? Wait, where are you sitting? I'll sit here. Okay.
Hi, I'm John Jaworski.
Hi, Bill.
How you doing, Bill?
How you doing?
Hi, John, Jeff Mills. How you doing?
Welcome aboard.
How you doing?
Good.
Now the first order of business, do you remember who we all are?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have, we have name tags to help. So has Commissioner, just to confirm, Commissioner Jaworski has been sworn in?
Yes. All right. Well, has you been appropriately sworn in yet?
That'll happen, I'm sure. It's very good to be back to strength. We've had a demanding calendar, and I'm sure we'll look forward to Commissioner Jaworski's contribution. It's very good to have you aboard.
Thank you.
Our next order of business is.
Thanks, and I'm just going to turn it over to Alyssa and Christie to keep us going on the conversation about the multifamily code amendments.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. So today we're doing a continuation of the November 7 meeting where we started kind of reviewing and taking a look at the proposed infill compatibility standards for multifamily developments. That meeting, we made it through two of the six topics, and we're hoping that today we have plenty of time to get through the remaining four topics. And just for those tuning in for the first time and for our new commissioner, just want to remind you that earlier this year, as part of Envision Eugene, the city council initiated code amendments related to infill compatibility standards for multifamily developments. The scope of these amendments was to be limited to ensure that we could get this work done in a timely manner and without sacrificing the project, process of the larger Envision Eugene efforts, which, as you've probably experienced, are taking a lot of, a lot of effort. So Christie Brown is here with me, and she's with Building Permit Services. She is a land use analyst, and what that really means is that she's one of the staff that reviews multifamily development building permits to make sure that they are consistent with our land use code. We worked together to draft these amendments after meeting with several members of the infill compatibility standards, multi-dwelling unit subcommittee, which included Commissioner Baker. And we also reviewed these with other in-house staff for consistency such as fire, public works engineering, public works transportation, building and legal. And we have sent these out once for kind of a broad public feedback before we came to the last work session. We've also been collecting comments since then which are attached to today's packet. Those that have come in since, well, basically since the November 7 on are attached at the end of your packet. And it's just next steps. The public hearing is scheduled for Tuesday, December 13 in the council chambers, and we anticipate holding work session, it's not scheduled yet, but in January to start walking through those comments. And we'll be doing, as Commissioner Liddick suggested, which is to kind of review all of the comments, kind of categorize them, and then provide, you know, why we landed at a certain recommendation, so to help you walk through all of these, because there certainly are a lot of technical components here. And unless there are any questions, I'm going to go ahead and do what we did last time, which is, you know, start with one of these, walk you through it, and then open it up for questions and comments from everyone.
Just a quick thing. Didn't seem like we completely went through the first two to our, you know, we had a number of issues that we, that we still had some concerns about too much. So it would be nice if there was time available to go back to those.
Okay.
After you get through the others, just to see.
That sounds like a good goal.
And also, in some ways, because those are the most complicated of the, of the measures, a lot of the other ones are, you know, simpler.
I think that is a good idea, and I think we can keep that in mind as we watch the clock, maybe try to get through three, four, and, three, four, five and six, and then come back and revisit one and two. So I'm going to go ahead and start with driveways and parking areas in the university area. That is on your packet, where does that start? Page 19 of the full packet. So a couple of things I want to explain about this. This does come, it is based on one of the ICS, the Infill Compatibility Standards Recommendations. We did change its form, stuck it in a different section and changed some of the language, but it does meet the intent of that ICS recommendation, we believe. Backing up, oh, let's see, and just so you understand, it would apply to the mapped area shown on page 21, and those are the R 3 and R 4 zoned areas surrounding the University of Oregon. And it would apply not to multifamily developments, which are developments of three or more units, so triplexes up to, you know, apartment buildings. What these standards are intended to apply to are those other situations that we're seeing in that particular neighborhood, which are duplexes and then an additional unit added on the back of an existing house. So those do not have to meet our multifamily standards. However, they are allowed in multifamily zoning, assuming the density is still met. Currently, in terms of driveways and parking areas, they can park, they can have parking in driveways in the front yard setbacks, provided they don't cover more than 50% of those front yard areas. So if you had a 50-foot wide lot, you could pave 25 feet. If you had a 100-foot wide lot, you could pave 50 feet. And once you're out of that front yard setback, so once you're beyond that 10 feet, you can pave away. So what you'll see over there, I don't know if you've driven over there lately, but, you know, you might see a standard-sized driveway, and then just beyond the 10-foot setback, you'll see like angled, some angled parking that are now in the front yard of that house. And I, it's actually a, if you drive around, we were given some addresses to drive around, and it's a fairly common occurrence where there's just a, you know, a single house in front and another house in the back, or for an older duplex, there's quite a proliferation of parking. What these standards would do is really limit the width, depth and location of those driveways in the front and side yards. So what they would do is require that you could only, you could have a single driveway off the street unless you were a corner lot, and then you could have two, because we're also seeing, you know, in that 100-foot wide lot, two 25-foot driveways. So this would require a single driveway unless you were a corner lot. It would provide that there was a minimum, or actually a maximum width for the driveway of 22 feet. The driveway had, would have to be a minimum of 20 feet in depth with a maximum of 33 feet in depth. And there would be no parking allowed in the interior yard setbacks, so those five feet along the side. It wouldn't preclude parking in the alley, so a lot of these are on the alley, and they could still also park in the alley or have all of their, their driveways off the alley. Let's see. And just for clarity, multifamily standards already limit the location and width of parking and driveway, so this is something to be kind of comparable to that. Is there anything else, Christie?
I don't think so.
Okay. There might be some questions?
Commissioner Liddick?
Alyssa, this comes at the request of the ICS committee?
Yes.
Does this exacerbate the on-street parking issue in the area? I mean, it seems to me it removes off-street parking spaces.
Well, I mean, if you went to the full 22 feet wide, 33 feet deep, you could actually be able to get four cars in there.
Okay.
And the majority of these, or if you look at the map, you know, maybe I won't go majority, but if you look at the number of alleys that are available to park off of, that would also allow.
So you don't think this is going to.
No, I mean, if you think about it, it's only for duplexes and, you know, situations where there are two units on a lot.
Okay.
Commissioner Duncan?
A couple of just questions for understanding purposes. If I read this, because I think it's D, let me make sure I got the right one. No, I'm sorry. See, if somebody wanted to build a unit close to the street and wanted to have parking behind, but it didn't have alley access to it, does this talk about no driveways and associated parking shall be in the interior yard setback? Now, is the interior yard setback then the one that's defined as that one in front that has to have at least a 15 by 15 square? What I'm after is if somebody wants to put a, a single driveway down the side to get to the back, does this preclude that?
This would allow it as long as it's setback five feet from the property line.
So, I mean, if you look at a lot of driveways, a lot of driveways run along property lots. I don't under, maybe I'm just missing what the point is. Can you give me an idea of why that would be?
I think Steve can. Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, I think I, I just wanted to clarify too. Gordon Ansler was, was an instigator of this particular proposal.
Gordon is?
Gordon was, was the instigator of this proposal. And I should note that we weren't, we didn't consider it to be just, at the time, I'm going to clarify too, we didn't consider it just to be a non-multifamily because there's some confusion in our understanding of the language in the multifamily standards about parking. The requirements in the multifamily zones require you to have a seven-foot, seven-foot landscape buffer. And although this is considered a driveway here, it's really parking. Okay? So having a five-foot setback is not considered a, was not considered to be an issue. We also had a note that if it was a shared driveway, then that obviously could be waived, in other words, if they're two properties. So having a setback where the driveway had to be five feet from the property edge was not considered a, was actually not as restrictive as the current code is for a seven-foot landscape buffer. So, so there wasn't. But doesn't the landscape, the seven-foot landscape buffer is for multifamily?
Correct.
This does not, this is for.
This is for not.
Two units.
Right, right.
Again. Does it apply to one unit?
Yeah, it would if one unit could meet density, yeah.
Except, again, when this was developed, it wasn't, one of the changes that staff made is they have, have changed this to only apply to non-multifamily. And our, our, the infill compatibility task team considered this to be, the wording was not clear enough in the multifamily as well, so it applied to, applied to everything in the R, I can't remember what it was, in R 2, R 3 and R 4 zones or whatever. R 3 and R 4 zones, I think it was. So, and one other point I want to make, the normal situation is not a house with a house behind it. It's where you take off a property.
Right.
And you build two new buildings, okay? Buildings or two new units? New units. I mean, they're, they're separate buildings, right? And, and then what you have is parking occurring in the front yard, in the front setback, which, you know, theoretically is the only open space. And I, and I think, one thing that would be helpful, you could suggest staff, is there are a number of photographs I'm sure you took. If you brought some of those. Or sent them, mailed them to us, I think people would get an idea, a better idea of what's, you know, what we're talking about. I guess what I was after more was if you call something a driveway going down the side of a building, and it's excluded from actually acting as a parking area, now I go like that's complaint-driven, would it be advantageous from the neighborhood standpoint if somebody came in to design a building that actually put the parking in behind? And my concern would be if somebody decided to do that, this might preclude it. Now again, I don't argue the issue because it just seemed to me that was one where, it just seemed odd to me that, that we're trying to say you can't do something that actually hides the cars.
And I would just speak to that, that I don't believe that this proposal precludes that option, but it does still require the five-foot setback in that mapped area. And the other piece that I would point out was that, what my recollection was, Council Baker, was that the proposal was actually to make a setback for the wings that were in the actual right-of-way for the approach, and that would be a change to chapter seven, not chapter nine. It wasn't anything that we could control through the land use code. So by proposing this to not being allowed intrusion into the interior yard setbacks because there's not that required landscaping bed like you see in multifamily projects, in effect accomplishes that goal. And so this is an issue both for developers and property owners alike, with that the impacts of a development adjacent actually can go up to six feet in front of their property with the, the construction of the wings to those driveway approaches when they're right on the property line. So it was our intent to put it in this location and not in the allowed intrusions as proposed by ICS, to try to address that for those types of projects that do not constitute multifamily by our definition. Per the definition of parking area, that would actually include any driveway access, so if it was a multifamily project, so three or more parking spaces, whether it's a driveway or parking right off of it, it all meets the definition of a parking area. So it would be required to have those buffers if it was triggering landscaping.
And then a follow-up question? Do we have a good definition of what adjoining properties are for shared driveways?
So in our code, it does state that if you have shared access, you're not required to have those landscaped, so it's actually in the landscape requirement section under, you know, parking improvement area, you know.
I think I was getting that more, does the definition or does the description talk about X amount of feet being located on each property?
No.
If I go in and buy a property, and I get the guy next door to allow me to put a foot of concrete down his property line, does that count as a, as a shared driveway to adjoining properties because he's got a foot of concrete and I've got 11 feet? Does he have to have someplace to, that driveway goes to?
He's going to be able, he'd need to provide parking.
That's how we've applied it, yeah.
No, but I mean, if he has parking?
So what he's saying is if he just gives an easement for a foot on his property, but it doesn't actually access any parking on his lot.
Right.
Is what I'm hearing you say.
Yes.
Right. So that's a good question.
The reason I'm asking that is we got that sort of thing into a flag lot at one point where you could have a flag lot if you had one foot coming off the street or whatever the number was.
Right, but you had to be able to share that driveway.
Yeah.
So that could be something we could take a look at.
I like shared driveways because it makes sense to me because you, you end up using less space for things, and it makes sense, particularly residential uses and stuff, but just the idea that maybe something that we're going to have to deal with later on at some point.
And that clarity, I mean, I think just building in that clarity will help us apply the standard to permit review as well.
I like that idea.
Yeah. So do I.
Commissioner Baker?
Well, a couple of things I, just to clarify too, again, one of Gordon's concerns was he's losing property when they, when you're allowed, and then it takes away from his frontage, or he might have planted trees or something else. It might be, it had been an extension of his outdoor open space or whatever. So that was one of his concerns. We, we didn't have the limitation on the university area. I think if you're going to say R 3 and R 4, you're going to have to include the other R 3 and R 4 areas that exist, which would be in the JWN. So I, you know, I'm, I have concerns about this because we never associated with this problem only with West University and South. In other words, this is, this is a problem that is, is most evident in West University because we have a lot of R 3 and there's a, you know, there's been a lot of development there compared to other. compared to other areas in the city. But the same issue exists in JWN and Amazon, wherever there's R3. So I would strongly suggest that we reconsider this, having it, it's not very forward-thinking to just say it's associated with the university area when these other areas are going to be the next areas that are going to be developed, whatever they are. And also, I still have some questions about, there was some, still some questions in my mind, the way this is worded, about the alley. You wanted to be able to go across the interior setback on the alley, and I wasn't sure that the wording was correct yet, deal with that. In other words, you know, that you could have parking off the alley, and obviously it's got to cross the interior setback.
The intent is, is to be able to provide, you know, alley parking and then to be able to have that within that interior yard setback.
Right. So I'm just, I just want to make sure that we check that wording.
All right, we can, we'll double-check the language on that.
And then I wanted to mention, there is a good, on Mill Street, between 15th and 16th and between 17th and 18th are really good examples of this. There's a new development that's gone in where it has a driveway near the property edge, and the parking is hidden under the building. So it's not all, it's a landlocked property. Then there's two or three dwelling units down is another place where essentially the front yard is all parking on the development. And then between 17th and 18th, Gordon Ansler did a project where he did use a shared driveway. There's two lots, and they share the driveway and parking underneath the buildings. It's on the left-hand side. And again, those are good examples to use as illustration. In general, I don't think that you're going to see a lot of shared, this is for new development, so shared driveways in new development are fairly unusual because you basically have, either a property is single ownership, and it's very unusual where you happen to get two owners that are willing to develop at the same time, and so that's why I say that that project between 17th and 18th is a, is a good example.
On what street?
On Mill Street. And you wouldn't, you wouldn't ever notice it that it's a shared driveway because it doesn't look like it. It appears as if it's one development. The park, the parking, the driveway is in the middle, and there are units on either side, and there's a, you know, courtyard at the end. It's on the east side. You can tell, it looks like one of Gordon Ansler's projects.
Commissioner Belcher?
I was going to follow up and ask staff to respond to Mr. Baker's question about extending these, these provisions throughout multifamily zones in the city.
And I think that is a great question, and one I actually wanted to bring back to you all, as I kind of referenced in the AIS. We focused it specifically on the university area because, you know, as Commissioner Baker mentioned, that really is where we're seeing the bulk of this kind of development, where people are just, you know, tucking in another unit, or the lot's small enough that they can, they can build a duplex. And it's also, you know, given the lot patterns, you know, it's the smaller lots, 50 by 100, 60 by 100 and whatnot. There are...
And the potential for multiple cars within a unit as well.
Right, right. And, you know, with student housing, right, there's, yeah, there seems to be a lot of parking in the front yard over there. That being said, I mean, there are other parts of town where we, there is infill occurring, and there are similar lot, you know, sizes and characteristics that it may, it may make sense to apply those to. I did bring the zoning map, and I might bring it closer to you all so you can actually see the lot layout. You know, as it was originally came from ICS, I think it said all R2, R3, and R4 zoning, and we felt like, Kristi and I were looking at that, and we felt like it was, it was too broad because there's a lot of those areas where, one, you're not going to see the individual units on lots. It really felt like these applied to infill situations, this particular standard, or, you know, the concern was really with infill standards. So there are indeed some neighborhoods that if, I mean, if you think that this would also, you know, make sense in those, then, you know, I'd be like, like to hear more about that.
So am I hearing you say you think the potential is less elsewhere?
Well, I think, hmm, is the potential less elsewhere? I, you know, I really think that we're going to continue to see this type of development and development pressure in the university area, and not the same types of development pressures in other parts of town. But that doesn't mean that we're not going to see development pressures in those, those parts. It's hard to, it's hard to tell the future here.
But I'd rather prevent something that might happen somewhere else than preclude something that isn't happening somewhere else. So I would, unless staff has a reason why we shouldn't, I'd say it would be appropriate to extend it throughout the city.
And would you, and when you say throughout the city, do you mean more in those infill considerations? So kind of like, there's area in JWN, there's some in Amazon, I can't remember where the other infill lots really are.
You're not going to have some R4?
Yeah, Amazon doesn't, by the way. It's our, our one, I believe, where it's...
What about along Willamette, is that friendly then?
That would not be Amazon. Amazon starts at Patterson.
Okay. And the other, you know, because there is the South Willamette visioning going on, that was another reason why we kind of left those particular lots. If you, along Willamette, there's a lot, actually quite a few are, areas where there's R3, some smaller R3 lots, but because there's already a planning process going on there, we didn't think that it made sense, but...
Well, this may be simplistic, but the goal is to keep people from turning their front yards into parking lots, right?
Yes.
So why wouldn't we want to preclude that throughout the city?
I'm kind of leaning the same.
Okay, okay. And that's something we can definitely...
Commissioner Randall?
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Duncan is next, sorry.
Well, I sort of lean that way too. I guess I would put a couple of precautions in. One of them is with all the work I'm doing in Envision Eugene, we're planning for extensive infilling in our community. So I'm always concerned about broad brush codes because it's like one-size-fits-all, and so we need to be careful about that. I would also suggest that there are parcels out there that I could see someone develop a few lots in an R2-type zone. And I think, I understand it from an infill standpoint, but I'd want to be careful if somebody was doing a four, five-lot R2 subdivision, what does that mean? So, you know, again, I want to be careful about the all size, you know, one-size-fits-all because as soon as we do that, then we find out where it doesn't work.
Right.
Also, which may be counterproductive. I think the other thing I would ask that, if we talk about these things, again, is there an effect, and we need to be careful, is there effect on density from the calculations we're using for Envision Eugene right now? So again, if we start making these things, we need to pay attention to the other homework that we're involved in right now too, so I guess I would ask that. Now, I'm going to go back to what Steve was talking about earlier. He actually gave us a couple of examples, and it has to do with E, where it says, "A driveway and associated parking shall be perpendicular to the adjacent street." And yet, we just heard Steve talk about two great examples where they came in and parked under the building, assuming they paralleled the street when they did that.
And I actually think those are multifamily, so that would be allowed.
Actually, those were, that, that one with the shared driveway was, I think it's four units each side. I guess, again, I would wonder why we're setting a direction, because somebody, again, may come up with an idea where they're tucking it into a garage that's parallel, and does that mean, oh, sorry, it's not perpendicular? I mean, again, we, we use some of these terms without thinking that there are ways that you can design things...
Right.
People actually want to design a good project. So I guess just again, to be careful about that. Maybe you can exempt it if it's shielded from the street or something like that.
Commissioner Randall?
And I guess, wanting to make sure that I'm understanding this too, is this only applies where the multifamily development standards don't.
Correct.
And where 964-203-A1 parking standard...
Probably don't have those memorized. Those are the parking landscape standards.
Okay.
Which apply when there's three or more parking...
So essentially, if somebody's doing an apartment complex in an R3 or an R4, this doesn't even apply.
These don't apply, right.
But if you're, if you've got an R3, R4 zone, and you're infill or whatever, and you're doing a duplex...
Duplex, yes.
Or those sorts of things, that's really where it applies. So it's a pretty limited scope of where it's going to apply.
It's very limited, right.
And the only thing I would say to that is that the type of design, if you think about anything outside of like a duplex, typically they're designed with garages, carports. I mean, that's very common. In this area, they're not. They're never providing carports or garages. Their parking is always on a, like a parking pad kind of approach. So that was the other kind of the broad brush, why we were not taking that approach, because it's not the same type of design or, or type of construction that we're seeing anywhere else in the city of Eugene as well.
I understand, but if somebody interprets these laws 10 years from now, then we're all gone. I mean, it's just, it's trying again to be clear and concise on certain things, so...
Sure, but that's just why we focused on that area. Yeah, yeah, I agree.
Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, I was going to just say that, spent a lot of time on this one, particularly Gordon spent an awful lot of time on this one. And we tried to come up with stuff that, something that would work. And there were, there was even issues about not having a perpendicular within five or 10 degrees of the side property line. In other words, if you had a lot...
Right.
I mean, the reality is that, you know, in the, in the, in the areas where we have R3 and R4, it's mostly a grid layout, you know, so it's not really that much of a problem. But, you know, that was obviously a concern. And, and the issue really here is not providing parking, but providing parking by using the front setback, which is primarily the large open, you know, the main open space on, on these kinds of developments nowadays. So it wasn't the issue of providing parking. And there are plenty of examples in West University where developers provided ample parking, you know. It's, it's a function of design. But if you design a, you know, the example, a good example is the one that, you know, close to the 16th and Mill, where they built two new buildings. The difference, the, the space between the downspots on the two buildings is narrower than seven feet. And there's a paved space between, so it's not even usable as a driveway. And obviously, they could have redesigned slightly to make it usable. So then they, they created this driveway that you couldn't get a car into without, you know, without being able to get out the doors. So instead, you pave the front yard and you park in the front yard, which is convenient. So it's, it's really not that it, it's, you know, it's a design issue. And we have lots of examples where they, they pretty much, you know, maximize the density and provide parking. You have to realize that the side effect of this now is the neighborhood pays the penalty when a project allows it, you know, when we're, you see parking out in the front yard or inadequate parking, and then there's more parking on the street or whatever. So we're trying to get rid of the side effects right now of this and tighten it up. Theoretically, the multifamily code is a bit better on this. We weren't completely sure that that's the case because we see some examples. But most of our problem areas are the ones that are, take a lot, put two new buildings on it, maybe they even take a lot and divide it and put four buildings, two on each one, and so that then they don't have to comply with, you know, the multifamily standards.
Commissioner Belcher?
Going back to throughout the city, the areas that you show map don't include the Harlow area across from Austin, which essentially has the same development issues, I believe, as far as students and putting in those types of developments in. I would request that we, we put this out there without the university epithet, wrong word, term, so we can have an opportunity for staff to look and see where those issues might be, and frankly, the public. If they see problems with it, they'll have an opportunity to know we're considering it for the entire city, and they can show up and express those concerns too. I, I understand the concern about the hidden impact that we haven't considered, but if we don't discuss it, we can't consider it. And I think that this is an opportunity to preclude a potential problem throughout the city. We can always change our mind after we've had our hearing, and this council can do the same. But if we don't put it out there, it won't be considered.
There are no more, we'll move on.
I'll just mention one quick, more, a quick comment. One of the problems that we have in West University is enforcement. So Gordon, I think, supplied you with a lot of photographs. There's a lot of examples where someone buys an older house, and it's got four or five students in it now, and maybe they throw down gravel in the front yard, maybe they don't, and they had a driveway. They just, now all of a sudden, they're parking in the front yard that used to have landscaping or whatever. So this doesn't really get at that, but it at least tries to put language in the code that makes it more enforceable. That's the problem now. I mean, we could show you 20 examples of that.
And we'll bring back photos. Obviously, I think those would be extremely helpful, so you can just kind of see some of the different situations that we've seen out there right now. So I'm going to go ahead and move on to the next one, which is recycling and garbage screening. This one also is specific to the university area. And now we're going to flop over, and this one's, is proposed to be specific to multifamily developments, so those projects that are three or more units on a lot. This particular one was not one that was identified directly through the infill compatibility standards. Rather, it came out of conversations we had with the members when we were talking about the other code amendments, as well as with developers, things we've heard from residents, and it's a topic that came out of what's called the Native Livability Group, which is a, a group of residents and other folks surrounding the university, talking about, you know, university-related issues, including land use, but really a host of other issues. And the concern here is that currently, if you have a, a large recycling and garbage area, it's required to be fully screened on all four sides. You end up kind of with a ministructure, it ends up having to have a roof because of stormwater. And what's, what we've heard is that there's a lot of safety concerns with these because you go to put your garbage and your recycling out there, and you don't know who's inside that, that structure. And they've become kind of attractive nuisances, I guess is the best word I can think of. You know, they're, they're shelter from the rain for some folks. There might be people who went in there to look for bottles and kind of just decided just to hang out, and they, there's been some, some serious incidences where it's really raised the level of concern. And so what we'd like to do is allow for that front entrance, so the pedestrian entrance, to be able to be partially screened. And we're, we're suggesting that it could go all the way down to 50%, and people could do that any way they wanted. If they wanted it along the bottom so you could see if there were feet, if you wanted it in different places, but just so that you were able to peek in there without opening the door and, and being surprised by what you might see. That's really the, about this one. And we'd like to use it as a test case. We have, I mean, I know you talked about expanding some of the other ones, but I think, given the characteristics, particularly in West University, I think we'd like to see how this works in this particular neighborhood before seeing if it's something that needs to be expanded. So that's kind of where that one is.
Commissioner Lenick?
Does this remove the roof?
No, it doesn't. That's a completely separate standard.
Commissioner Belcher?
It says it should be a minimum of 50%...
Right.
Side obscuring. It still could be 100%.
Absolutely.
So you're just providing an option, you're not requiring...
Yeah, kind of providing some flexibility in, you know, how and where they do that.
Commissioner Duncan?
Is there a reason, when you talk about there's a concern of safety because of an individual may be in there, what stops the individual from being behind the container or whatever else? I mean, if you're still, you're still requiring 100% on three of the four sides.
I guess it's the placement of the container, which is, we don't have control over. It becomes more of a management issue in this case. This just gives them some flexibility so they can provide some, you know, transparency of what's, what's going on in there.
Is, is it a requirement of our multifamily code that you have these facilities?
If they're, they can be in the building, correct?
Yeah, absolutely.
They could be, you know, in the building, but if they're outside the building, then they have to be fully screened like this.
And just so you know, it's not just multifamily. This is a screening requirement the multifamily standards points to, but it's a requirement of all garbage enclosures, except for I3 and, or I2 and I3, I believe, is the only exception in all zones.
The reason I was asking is it seems like there may be other kind of flexible ways to do it. I mean, there's a lot of facilities that I see where people are really striving to recycle a lot, and particularly if we now are going to have recycling where we're going to start talking about food composting and all those things, we may end up with areas that instead of having the larger typical dumpsters, we're going to end up with a lot of the small canisters in there. And it would seem to me one of the ways that you could resolve that is by allowing the height of those things to come down dramatically. Because I think right now, we're required to put a six-foot screening around the... I think right now, we're required to put a six-foot screening around those things, aren't we?
Yeah, it's six to eight feet.
It would just seem to me that if we could lower some of those, if in fact, you know, that we're trying to hide what's inside, is I think what the plan is, or at least cover what's inside. If in fact, we're developing systems that we're gonna recycle a whole lot more of our products, and we're gonna have to somehow divide those amongst the variety of canisters, then it may be a way that we can also create some of the safety issue by not requiring something that nobody can see inside of.
Well, we initially, and we initially looked at doing the 50% on all four sides when we were looking at this change. And, and through that proposal, things, we're still hearing that screening and containment of garbage is a huge issue. So the problem is, is not that there's not a location for it, that it's either undersized, it's still overflowing. I mean, I think that that's a big issue. So as much as, you know, we're open to that as a, in concept, it wasn't necessarily meeting all the goals.
I guess what I was looking for is, if we're gonna talk about these things, just the ability to have flexible designs.
Right.
That work with some of the new things that are coming forth, and what we're trying to do as a community to quit throwing everything into the ground and trying to recycle and use a lot of our stuff.
Mr. Leitich?
Yeah, just a couple of things. If the goal is, and I think rightfully so, to screen these areas from view from, like it says here, from the streets, accessways, and adjacent properties, getting to Rick's point, I'm wondering why you need to put a minimum six and maximum of eight. If you just have the standard, it shall be screened, and then allow the 50% reduction on the pedestrian side. Seems to me then, a developer has some leeway there. Still meets the adjacent concern for visibility, and provides for whatever might be coming in the future, or whatever the circumstances of a proposal might be. And, and I would suggest if that's the case, I'm wondering why experiment with just the university area in that case. A security issue is a security issue anywhere. And if you have the aesthetic issue resolved, seems to me it'd be worthwhile applying citywide again.
Couple thoughts on that. One with, there are some building code and some stormwater code issues that we're trying not to touch with this particular one. And I think it's stormwater that actually requires the roof, or is it building?
No, it's storm.
And so part of it, if the roof is required, then lowering the height's kind of impossible.
Okay.
Which is a little problematic. I mean, it's something we can look into. And there's actually a greater problem that we're not solving with this particular code amendment, which is, I mean, these things really do become these structures you could sleep in because of the, the walls and the roof. And so that's kind of a big, another conversation that is going on, you know, with the building permit folk, about is there a way to, you know, reduce some of those standards so they don't have to be so, such large structures? And then there's also some fire issues along with that, too. But I think it's something we can, we can definitely look at, you know, within the context of these code amendments, is there some more flexibility we can give?
Yeah, without eliminating the aesthetic protection.
Right, right. So it's, yeah, it's trying to, trying to strike that balance. And then, you know, with the university, there's multiple users typically using these, and, and they don't, often they don't lock them, because they just don't, because it would, it's kind of a nightmare for people coming and going. I think with a lot of other, the one I just saw recently, there's the, Washington-Jefferson Street Bridge, there's that new redevelopment there, where there's the Starbucks, and the Five Guys, and the T-Mobile. They have one in the back, they have a, outside. And, you know, it's just those three users that are using that. So in commercial developments, I don't know that they're experiencing the same thing, because there's three long-term, you know, hopefully, customers using that particular thing. So they're able to lock it.
Yeah.
And I think with the multifamily, it just is kind of a different circumstance.
And the standard currently points to the L6 landscape standard, which is the fence requirement, 100% side obscuring, the minimum six foot high. You know, what we were looking to do is then, okay, well, what if we pointed the code to L5, which is the partial screening, which is 50%? The problem that we heard when we proposed that was that it allows chain-link fence with vines to grow on it, or things like that.
Okay.
It, it opens it up to a point where you're not really getting the same level of screening. It's not the same as like, you know, every other slat of a, you know, wood fence is missing, or...
Tangled up in our own code.
Right, right. And so it just seemed that, to provide that flexibility and kind of meet some of those, you know, other issues, the one side was the best solution. But that's, yeah.
Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, I wanted to, I wanted to mention, this is actually another one of, this is a Gordon Anzlo project. And I can give you an exact, a point to the property that was the instigation for this, which is like 1475 High Street. So basically, it's on the alley that Whitebird is on. And it's a typical of, I mean, he built a brand-new, they built a brand-new project there. Even has, doesn't, has open space. It doesn't, doesn't go for the density bonus, even though it has higher density. It actually provided open space. And they, the challenge you have in, in West University and South University is the same way, is becoming the same way now. Because you have these attractive, attractors for people coming through to collect bottles and cans and whatever else they want. And then you have the students themselves. And so you have these garbage sites that really become a mess. You know, they spread out onto the alleys and the streets. So we require them to be enclosed in the newer developments. The older developments don't have this. You can drive through West University and see all kinds of big dumpsters on the alleys. And a lot of times, there's a pile of stuff next to it. So developers, for the most part, don't have a problem with screening because it keeps this stuff sort of out of view. And usually, there's a large door, and they roll out the dumpster, and maybe they'll, will change and go to smaller bins. But the point is, there's a large door that things can get rolled in and out of. And the problem is that sometimes, you can't tell that somebody undesirable is inside that. You know, you're a, you're coming out to, you're throwing away your garbage, and you can't tell. And you're all of a sudden surprised. You know, you can imagine a, a new freshman female college here, and all of a sudden, there's a less than desirable person standing right in front of her. So Gordon wanted to have some ability to partially screen some of this, so that you might have a chance to see that there were some legs in there, or whatever. It's not that you would be able to scan the entire thing, but there would be a better chance to know. And not only that, their own staff, when they drive by, can't tell either. So it means that when the property owners, property management staff goes by, that they would have an ability to drive by and see that somebody's sleeping in there, or whatever, and, you know, make a call. So that really was the purpose of this. And then the challenge is trying to how to make it work. One of the problems that we discussed landscape screening is, landscape screening, if you base it upon our neighborhood, is not permanent screening. It's only there when the building is permitted and approved. And then, a year later, the landscape screening is all trumped down in a lot of cases, and doesn't exist. So that's not a permanent mechanism. And I think that's, you know, what the staff did was reasonable. They allow you to adjust the screening, but we had some difficulty trying to figure out what, you know, what would, how you would handle that. So that's the challenge. You've got this eyesore, and, you know, it's more than eyesore. You know, there are large, small mammals in our neighborhood that depend on the, this not, you know, aside from the, you know, more cuddly beavers and other ones, there's some less desirable mammals that, that, so you want to sort of screen this from view. At the same time, there's an interest in trying to provide some minimal level of security for the occupants, so that when they go to, you know, throw away their trash, which might be in the evening or whenever, that they aren't unpleasantly surprised. So it's really a challenge. I think that this is really a challenge. And, you know, I, you know, I, I think it's worth making the change to see if it'll help, and not making the change too aggressive, because the goal is not to un-screen these spaces, but to provide some limited amount of vision into them.
I guess I would, I, I offer also that, as written, it is not an aggressive change. It allows flexibility, or basically status quo, as I understand it. Therefore, I'm not understanding why we wouldn't allow it citywide. I mean, and I'm thinking exactly of the multifamily type enclosures that are in other parts of the city that may or may not face problems, but if they can make a choice to implement it, if they have a problem or not.
Commissioner Belcher?
Yeah, I was just gonna add, the homeless issue is not unique to the university.
Commissioner Duncan?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Are we ready to move on to the next one?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay, so number five, this is a compatible transition between the R1 low-density zone, low-density residential zone, and the R3, R4, with a limited high, and the high-density residential zone. And this one is proposed to apply in South University. I want to pass out a couple of things. First, you'll probably notice that the figure wasn't attached, so probably want a copy of that. And then the second thing is just another piece of testimony, comments that came in, and these were submitted by Carolyn Jacobs. She brought a large-sized, a couple of, the seventh work session, she brought a large-sized poster of this, and was kind enough to give me an updated, small version of it. And I just want to make sure everybody has that. And I'm gonna do one, I'm gonna move the map closer, so you guys can see this as well. So this is proposed, so here's the university. The orange, if you can see it, is the R4. And then this lighter orange is the R3. And then it's immediately adjacent to the R1, which is the low-density residential. And you will remember, those of you involved in ICS will remember that we did address and make some changes to the height limitations there, both in South and West University, in the R3 and R4 zones. We're coming back at this point because there's just still some more compatibility that needs to be addressed in that transition. And so this is proposed just to apply in that South University area. Camera of the two side streets, is it Hilliard to Kincaid? No, hold on. Patterson to Aggett would apply, and between, basically between 19th and 20th. And what it would do, there's two options. And the first one is what the neighborhood came to us with, and it would be, so for the, the first 50 feet, so if you're at the R1 boundary, and, you know, you walked 50 feet, that distance, the building height would be limited to 30 feet. And that's what it is citywide. And then you could go up to the allowed height. They were asking to have that applied in this, in basically in this particular area, as well as in the West University area. What Kristy and I did is took a look at, you know, what that would really do. And what we came to the conclusion was that it's really more about building mass than it is about height. And so we came up with, you know, looking at other examples in the code and other places, we came up with what's called a slope setback for this particular area. And what it would require is a 10-foot setback from the R1 zone, or from that property line. And then the building would be allowed to go up to 25 feet in height, and then it would need to slope at a seven, seven, seven inches vertically for every 12 inches horizontally away from that R1 property line. And it could do so until it reached the maximum building height allowed. And in that area, it's actually 35 feet. And I'm trying to think if there was anything else. I think one of the benefits to this particular one is with that 10 feet, as you recall from last time, with the open space standards, we're proposing allowing the interior yard setbacks to be used for open space. So that would actually, you know, allow a developer to use that, that 10-foot setback as part of their required open space. So that would be a benefit to that. Kristy, did you have anything to add?
Well, I think, you know, if you look at this picture, in essence, you know, what, this is the example that we use trying to apply and come up with a standard that would help. And I, we didn't feel that reducing the building height by five feet would really change this much. And so when you think and apply that, that this is the example that we used when we came up with this proposal. So I think that's helpful to know.
Mr. Leitich?
Two, two questions. Where do you come up with the slope ratio? And second, have you given thought to dormers, whether or not they would be allowed in that?
Dormers would not be allowed. At this point, eaves and chimneys would be the only allowable intrusions within the setback. Remember where the seven to 12 came from?
No, I mean, I think that's the same that we've seen in the other slope setback locations, which is Chambers, Jefferson, Westside. I think those are the similar, yeah. That was my recollection off the top of my head. But it, you know, I think that's the standard that we typically see. That is the requirement of six to 12, if you get the, you know, for the added seven feet of height for the roof pitch. So it just seemed to be in line with a lot of those other, instead of being at odds with them.
But as I recall, in Chambers, doesn't that slope go back only a certain point, then you can go vertical?
I think in most of those, in most of them, it's on both sides.
It's how they connect. Yeah, it is, uh-huh.
Okay, so this is following the Chambers model?
On the one side.
On one side.
Right. So it's just really along that boundary. And of course, you know, Chambers, I mean, it's, you know, eight feet high, you know, within the first 60 feet, and then it only goes up to 12 feet in the, yeah. So I mean, this is definitely an adding in height up to the 25. And the assumption there was, you know, then it really reduces it to a maximum of two floors, in essence, versus trying to get the full three.
Does this come from ICS?
Uh, no, well, I mean, it's an offshoot of, the, the first option came from some of the members of, you know, formerly of ICS, or from some of the members of ICS. This isn't a recommendation that came directly from ICS.
Commissioner Belcher?
I was present at the Neighborhood Leaders Council meeting with Paul when we talked about the concerns about an adjacent property. One of the concerns was solar access. This property was to the south that had the large building that created the concern. My question is, does this seven and 12 pitch provide an analogous angle to that necessary for solar insulation, or did you consider that at all?
So this, so where those boundaries are, I guess, so just to make sure I understand what you're asking.
In this case, you're right. They're all, they're to the north.
It's to the north, right.
I guess it's a question for further considerations, I guess. Is, is a seven to 12 pitch good for solar insulation? Do we know that? I guess I can find that on my...
No, not necessarily. I mean, R3 and R4 are exempt from solar setback. You know, so the R1 is subject to that for a solar to the north property line, yes. So that was not part of the consideration, no.
Understood. Do we also have R3 and R4 somewhere else in the city that may be to the north of R1 housing?
So I can't answer that.
To the south.
Excuse me.
Not R4. There may be some R3.
So that would raise the next question of, is it appropriate just here, or should we consider in other areas as well, this proposal?
Commissioner Duncan?
So the current setback for R3, R4 is five feet.
Correct.
Or 10 feet between buildings?
No.
Five feet. It's five feet from the property line.
So this then moves it to 10 feet?
Correct.
Doesn't matter where the next building is?
That's correct. So only if you're less than five feet, is there a requirement to be 10 feet between structures?
Correct.
So if you are complying with a five-foot setback on your property, because actually, this specific site actually has a building like a foot off the property line, that's a legal non-conforming structure.
Yeah, on the R1 side.
On the R1 side.
Oh, in this example?
Yeah, in that example. So just so you know that...
The driveway.
Yeah, that goes back to a garage, that's the non-conforming structure.
Oh.
Yeah, you can't quite see it there, but...
The house is...
Correct, yeah.
Then down here, do I read this right, that it says, for those properties with interior setbacks shall be at least 10 feet from the property line of budding, or across an alley from an R1 zone? Does that mean...
There are some properties...
Additional 10 feet?
No, they have to be...
Across the alley?
No, it's just 10 feet. Because zoning technically doesn't cross the alley, so the, the right-ofway is unzoned. So if you're... So if you're either, you need to be 10 feet from the zone, or 10 feet from the alley that's adjacent to that zone. And if that's not clear, I mean, it's certainly something we can clean up the language.
Not clear.
Okay.
What's the current setback between R1, R3 with regard to step-ups? There isn't one? I thought we did one. Did I?
In terms of building height?
Yeah.
There's not a setback, but currently in this area, it's, you have, it's actually on that first page there. Between 19th and 20th, the maximum building height is 35 feet. And then, and that's in the R3. And then for the R4 zone, it goes up to 50, and then it goes up to 65. So there is a stepping in that particular area.
But not on one lot, not on any one given zone.
No, not on one lot.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so there is no stepping, okay, there's no stepping on individual lots, correct.
It seemed to me that this seven, 12 pitch didn't even match what was here. It was actually going to reduce it. Now I understand, because now you're talking about, got it, all right, I'm with you now.
Okay.
It wasn't clear that it was on a single lot.
So the proposal was specifically not to change the building height that was just previously changed to 35. It was to maintain that, but this was viewed as a sloped interior yard setback that then, you know, obviously then meets that height at a point.
Got it now.
If it's not clear, I mean, option number two would be our preference, but we wanted to put them both out there since they had both been discussed in kind of the formulating of this.
Commissioner Randall.
I guess in the interests of, if we're heading towards slope setbacks, I think it would be nice, from an architect's standpoint, to have some level of consistency throughout the city as we're doing this, so that, you know, in one area, I've got to figure it's 10 feet back and then a seven, 12 pitch, in another area, it's five feet back and a 10, 12 pitch, or those sorts of things. I think if we're going to head that way, which I like the idea of slope setbacks, because I think they achieve what we're wanting to achieve, I'd like to see us maybe start now with a level of consistency in those, so that as we step through, we're making it a little easier for people to know which setback applies. And then I know Commissioner Liddick mentioned, you know, dormers and that, and I think having a certain level of dormer projections allowed would also be good, because that just gives additional articulation and keeps from large expanses and roofs and makes it more interesting from an architectural standpoint. So I guess to kind of throw that out, not to muddy the waters necessarily, but if we're going to do it, I think let's get a good basis to start with.
Commissioner Liddick.
Yeah, this is my, kind of my pet issue. I've said it many times, and I need to say it again, that, you know, seven years on the Planning Commission, the one issue that consistently bites us is when a large development like this goes up next to establishing a family homes. And as we head into Envision Eugene, again, I've asked that we be real cognizant of how we treat the transition area between all these high-density areas that we're proposing, adjacent single-family homes. And so, John, if this is good for the goose, why not for the gander and apply it citywide? I think Bill's comments about consistency and maybe allowing certain, you know, the dormers or whatever, needs to be considered. This issue goes way back to that Chambers revisited when I first got on the commission, and I thought what was worked out with that neighborhood process, I thought's work is a pretty good model for citywide application. And I would really ask, I mentioned this to you, is applying this citywide. And what I'm wondering is, what would happen even if we applied this R1 next to R2? This just pertains to R3 and R4. What's the ramifications about considering it next to R2 as well on a citywide basis? And I will say, I do want to hear from the architects and the developers, too, what impact this has on being able then to make these pencil out, but from a starting point, why not apply it citywide?
And I'm going to come at it with a process perspective, not the architect's perspective, although I do support the slope setbacks. I think in terms of process, it would slow this package down, and I think these are intended to be limited in scope and scale. And so I think adding that really adds a lot of complexity to this particular package. I think it's something that we should absolutely consider. I'm just not sure that this package is the right, you know, set of code amendments to do that in.
When could we? This is right, the middle of Envision.
Yeah, we can include it in the next, I mean, my hope is that as soon as we conclude this, we'll do another round.
Right.
Of code amendments.
I'm only going to be here another year and a half.
Right. No, you're not.
Sounds like you're going to get the language perfect, though, so it'll be easy idea.
Can we get the vote on that? Commissioner Jaworski.
I had a similar issue, because I have some developments where I am that are R2s going into R1s. And, you know, even if you look at what you state here for R2s between R1s, it's 10 feet between buildings, not even the zoning, the property line. So you're going from 30 to 35 feet. And what you're saying here is that in these other R3 and R4, they don't even have to, you know, they're complying, it's much more stringent than between an R1 and an R2. I don't see why. I think the same sort of either transition areas should be in all zones, so that they have the same impact, as was stated by the commissioner before me. I get a little confused in your option on R1. You said that with citywide, that 3A, it's 30 feet for a building located within 50 feet of the.
Yeah, currently that's citywide, except for in the area described in B and C and D.
Okay, so you would be tightening that up then, rather than having it this loose?
That's, you know, under option one, it would be, it would be making sure that it did clearly apply citywide to the R3 and R4 everywhere. Right now, it just accepts those West University and South University areas.
Okay.
But these are, these are, these options don't actually work together. What it would be is, you know, we're actually, would recommend option two be the one that goes forward as opposed to option one.
This is part of option two?
Yes.
I don't have a calculator with me, but when I take a look at this, you define the first 10 feet from the R1 zone property, and if one looks at your seven, 12, that means it would probably reach a height of 30 feet, at maybe 20 feet from it?
Actually, 35 feet, it's 17 feet.
Well, I thought it was 10 feet up to the dotted line, and then from the dotted line on seven, 12, to go another five feet, would have to go 10 more feet back. So that would be 20 feet from the property line. And for 35 feet, it would be around 23 and a half feet from the property line? You didn't put them on there, I was just trying to calculate.
Right, no, and we had some scratch.
So at 19 feet back, it was 30 feet high, is what we, how we kind of sketched it out.
All right.
And then at 30 feet from the property line, it's 37 feet high. Basically, you, in that, of course, it's maxed at the 35.
And on the other side, they would have to have a setback of the minimum would be in an R1, is five.
Correct.
So then you're saying that between the buildings, there would be, under the slope proposal, 24 feet?
15. The home can start, this particular building, the wall would start at 10 feet.
Oh, oh, I see, you're not moving the whole structure back.
No.
You're saying that you.
Another way to do it, but this one starts at, yeah, it would start the structure at 10 feet back instead of at 5 feet.
I see, and then they would just slope up, and then they could raise to another building height?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Duncan.
I just kind of followed with Commissioner Liddick. One of the big discussions going on right now, of course, is to look to our commercial corridors for increased density. And almost everyone of those commercial corridors, or a lot of them, are adjacent to single-family R1s. And right now, the only restriction, I think, is 120 feet in C2.
If they're adjacent to residential, they're limited actually to the height in residential.
For 50 feet.
50, 50 feet.
So after that, then you go to 120?
Could. You could. I mean, I think the good news about those corridors is that we're hoping, we're planning to do area planning there, so we can look at them, you know, specifically and in the context.
When will we get to that?
During your fourth term.
Or my fifth or sixth. I mean, my point is that, is we've talked about a lot of these studies for decades, and we're not getting there. And if you, and the other thing is, if we're going to talk about density in these corridors, we need to have sort of at least an idea of what we're talking about for density, because if we're going in and saying, we're going to make sure we get all the density, and we're going to build high rises all the way down our corridors, and then we come in and say, no, but by the way, if it's next to R1, you're not going to do that, we need to really understand that, as we plan right now for the future, not, we plan now to have everything, and oh, by the way, we're going to cut it way back in five or 10 years. Of course, I'm not, I don't believe we're going to get a lot of that development, but, you know, it's still a potential there. And a lot of our C2 is very narrow from street to the R1. So I mean, 50 feet's a huge chunk of what that space could be. So I mean, we just kind of need to understand that. Envision Eugene. I read in the paper this morning, a very slow pace, I saw.
You had a good quote.
Commissioner Belcher.
But before I even became the planning commissioner, I remember staying in a motel.
And when was that?
1937. I was staying in a hotel and near the airport in Portland, and I was residing on the eighth floor of the motel, hotel, looking down on the backyard of the house adjacent to me. This is the problem, although clearly not that great extent here. Listen, I understand your concern that this might slow things down, but we don't know until we ask. So again, I would suggest, again, throwing this out citywide, possibly including R2, seeing what type of feedback we get. And if it does seem fairly large, we can always go back to where we were. But if we don't ask for the information, we won't get it.
Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, a couple of things I wanted to throw out. One is, a lot of times when you're building these multifamily developments adjacent to R1, we always think of the R1 as properly setback from the side yard. That's not always the case because of the way, you know, a lot of these are older buildings that were built, and then the plating happened later, and they didn't necessarily move the building. So very often you'll have a, and like in this case here, this example here, you had a, the garage was pretty much on the property line, sometimes even the houses, I mean, there's an example on that same block between 15th and 16th and Mill, where the house itself was on the property line. This is a multifamily structure there, was on the property line. And so the other apartment building had to come in and had to have the 10-foot setback on that side. They were using that for landscaping and parking anyway, so it wasn't an issue. But I want to raise that issue, so when you consider the separation, you really have to consider it from the property line, not from where you think the building might be, because it's not the case, particularly in older neighborhoods. I'm also in favor of considering this, certainly the R3 and R4 in other areas other than just the university, because the problem, if we have R1, R3, then we should try to deal with it where we can. I wanted to mention one other thing that, we discussed this in the infill compatibility task team or the multi-dwelling committee, and it's the one issue that I'm sorry that we never got to, because I think this is, the other approach, another approach, the way they deal with this in Portland, and I'll mention this for the staff, so if you look at table 120-4 in the Portland code, in their multi-dwelling zones code, the way they deal with this is, they deal with the setback based upon the area of the adjacent building. So the minimum setback is five feet, that would be for an area of building that's 1,000 square feet.
Like a footprint?
Yeah, no, that's the wall area.
It has a scale, something like that.
The scale, wall area. So it doesn't try to deal with it with height, it deals with scale. And so if you're at 3,400 square feet, then the setback, and there's a, you know, it's graduated, but if you're 3,400 square feet, the setback is now 14 feet. So the way they deal with it is, when you have, and this is, this is not between R1 and R4, this is in all multifamily zones, this is the way they've been doing it for years. So if you build a big building in a multifamily zone, you step it back. That means you can have 1,000 square feet on the five-foot section, and you can have, you know, seven foot back, you could have a total of 700 square feet, you know, blah, 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 until you get to this 34. But it's another way of dealing with this issue that deals with the scale, not trying to deal with it as height. So, for example, in this example here, if you were going to do this, you'd have to be 14 feet back from the property line. That would be, that's not, it's not dealing with the zone change, it's just dealing with being in an R3 zone, that's just required. If you build that much scale, you have to.
But you could be 14 feet back and then go straight up three stories?
Yep. But normally.
The adjacent building could be R3 also?
Well, yeah, this is, this is, this setback is within the zone, it's not zone transition, but I'm just saying it's a way of dealing with the scale. So you could have part of the building that's within five feet, but the whole point is that you would end up scaling, you know, stepping the building back until, you know, if you really wanted to build this, which I assume right now is at the five-foot setback, I'm, you'd have to clarify that. If you wanted to do that, that would be at 14 feet back. And so the impact would be a lot less, because the scale of this building is pushed, you know, pushed back for it. And it's just another approach to dealing with this and trying to deal with it as heights, because, I'll just throw it out, because it's what Portland's been used for a long time. This isn't, this doesn't specifically deal with the zone, you know, zone transition boundaries, but, you know, it does show you there are other ways to deal with, you know, these scale issues. And, you know, that's a very flexible way, it graduated, you know, it means that you could have a building that parks all the way out at the five. I wanted to mention that, just to.
This is not my hotel.
Well, yeah.
All right, moving on to number six then, which is the bike parking standards. And I want to bring up, these were also not, these were not part of the original ICS proposals, but these, actually, these amendments were born out of conversations we had about the other proposals, as well as conversations with neighborhood residents, developers, designers. Some of these were outcomes of the downtown projects that are currently going on. And then finally, we did also take a look at the pedestrian and bicycle master plan that's currently headed towards council adoption. So these came from a number of places. And in some cases, they're actually broader than multifamily, they may apply, they apply to bike parking citywide. The intent here was really to provide more flexibility and clarity about how and where required bicycle parking can be provided. So this is bicycle parking that would be provided onsite, because your particular development triggered the need to provide, you know, some type of bicycle parking. Just some highlighted some of the amendments. And I will say a couple of the things that we did, you'll notice a lot of, there's actually quite a few amendments, but some of them, we were just moving things around to create a better organization, so we could make some changes to it. But in terms of things that affect multifamily, right now, some bikes can be tipped vertically, but they couldn't be hung for storage, so we're recommending that a certain percentage be available to be hung for storage, you know, providing really more flexibility on how those bikes can be stored, allowing bike parking on upper floors in conjunction with multifamily developments, if there's an elevator, allowing short-term parking in the right-of-way if there's a revocable permit, and making really clear that that's actually, would be counted towards your required parking. Simplifying the shelter requirements for short-term parking, and that's one of the things that came out of the pedestrian and bike master plan recommendations. And then finally, for multifamily projects in the university area, the amendments would require one additional bike parking space for apartment with three or more bedrooms. So, you know, a three-bedroom, four-bedroom, five-bedroom apartment would require two bike parking spaces. And it would also, the proposal requires that a small percentage of those actually be short-term. So we are seeing that, you know, if you have somebody come visit, they don't actually have a place to park their bike currently, if you're going to go visit your friend in that apartment. So this would have a couple, would require that there are, you know, a minimum of two short-term spaces available for quick visits, trips home or for visitors. And, let's see, anything else, Christie? Who knows? So go ahead and, probably go ahead and take your questions on these.
Commissioner Duncan.
I'd like to thank two of the bicycle-friendly people on the commission for explaining certain things to me before we got here today, but I appreciate that. A couple of questions on what appears to a layperson be a conflict.
A couple of questions on what appears to a layperson be a conflict. I'm under 9.6105-2B, and it says over here, overhead clearance for at least seven feet, that's on the third line, but then it says down below for vertical space, it has to be no more than six feet. Black says seven, the blue says six. Is that a conflict? I'm trying to figure out, if I'm the guy trying to build this thing, what am I building to? Or does that mean that I can hang hooks to six feet?
Right. So, that was the intent. So, overhead clearances, we would have a lot of attempts to put bike parking sometimes under stairwells or things like that, where, you know, you can't physically get in there, you don't have a head clearance. So, more of that issue for the up-above standard. The other was the actual space, when you kind of tip it vertically, how high can it be as far as, you know, creating building, fixing a fixture of some form, that it couldn't be taller than that as far as physically lifting it to hook it up?
I assume that this has been put through all building and everything else, because there's a lot of people taller than six feet.
Absolutely.
Into these things?
As far as, well, and that's just, so just to clarify, most of these are the racking systems or a hook system that they would install. So, you still have to meet building code as far as access and height. It's just actually how high the rack can be to have somebody physically lift it up to hook it on a hanging type of fixture. So, that was the thing. And we did do some field trips. We did kind of looked at some ramping racks that had been installed at West Town. We had looked at some different mechanisms, because things have been installed that are over and beyond required bike parking. So, what we see typically is code compliant for the required numbers, but there are projects that install over and beyond that. And then they do some of these other type of applications that don't necessarily have to meet code.
And based on what you just said, if I meet code following this, then I can do other things that may be a different height, different shape, different size?
Yeah, stacked bike parking is one option as well that we've seen.
And then the other question I had, the same thing. You talk about space maybe reduced 18 inches if designed using a hoop rack, and yet down below the spacing has to be two feet. Those aren't in conflict with each other?
So, the issue for the, it is a reduced width between hoop racks, because there's an assumed, when you come up to a hoop rack, you can have the overlap of handlebars and pedals and things like that, and usually you can maneuver your bike, and it's on the ground. So, when you go to tip a bike up and you're lifting it up, you can't necessarily maneuver it. At least I could not physically maneuver that, trying to lift it up over, you know, unhook it onto physically a rack. So, then it doesn't really allow for that overlap that we do permit when it's on the ground. So, that was an intentional intent on that. And that was also some of the standards that we saw in the industry, just looking online for these, from these manufacturers that actually produce these racks, and what they actually recommend.
I've got three more. Can I keep going? Just a quick question. Under D, we talk about areas devoted to required park spaces shall be hard-surfaced with concrete. I assume we're talking the floor area?
Correct. Or even what the rack is installed in. So, that's an issue that we've had. Our code never really specified. So, we've had, been pushed on this point, where, you know, if it's compact gravel, can they install the rack in that? So, it's been hard to say no, but in our opinion, it hasn't necessarily been secure that those racks can still be, the whole rack can be potentially removed. And so, that was kind of a fix in our minds, to actually require that to be hard-surfaced.
What about the hanging things? Pertain to the-
Yes, that they would be part of the all-required bicycle parking spaces, so.
As far as securely fixed?
Yeah, but I mean, they can be secured into steel, wood, anything else? That allowed, that's allowed here?
Oh, I see what you mean.
I see, yeah. This was not, this was more looking at it from the ground space. So, we could clarify that.
But again, this code's now talking about vertical and horizontal.
Yep, yep, thank you.
Down below, do we have some idea what a convenient distance to main entry means? Or is that sort of one of those, I get to choose when I show up with my plan and talk to the planner? Do we have guidelines of sort of how we decide what convenient is?
We don't have necessarily a guideline. I mean, that can be somewhat subjective. Typically, we look at it as being next to the front door. Is it visible from the front door? What's convenient? No farther than a parking space, things like that, you know. Yes, it allows for some flexibility, but there is not anything clearly defined relating to that, no.
Well, I'm just thinking of some of these parking places, particularly some of the units we're seeing built by campus, where there's access off the back, parking garage area, and I ride my bike down the alley and through the back door. This refers to main entrance, which to me is always a front entrance. It just seems to me that we're specifying things that-
Well, and if you jump to the next one, because that one actually addresses commercial, industrial, or institutional, under A. So, B is just with-
For multifamily.
Convenient distance of an entrance to the residential unit. So, that one doesn't say main. Yeah.
We actually tried to break that out, because we felt like that was confusing. It was all lumped together. Actually, short-term, long-term, it was all lumped together. And so, that was a way, you know, one location-wise, and then security was the other. We tried to break those out, and then created the multifamily piece.
And I would argue that most commercial buildings, if you're an employee, you come through the back door. So, again-
Oh, absolutely.
Bike all the way to the front door?
No, 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 that was short-term. I mean, assuming short-term has to be visible from the front door. I mean, long-term could be within the building. I mean, actually, one of the, it's bicycle lockable, bicycle enclosure.
I want to talk about where it says, "Long-term bicycle parking location and security under three."
Yeah, and so, I would agree with you. I mean, those things, we have not required them to be up by the front door. It's basically convenient to a main entrance. That can be a back door. Nothing in our code defines that that's a front door facing a street.
As long as we have-
Absolutely. And so, we've not applied that in that. And there's, you know, obviously, you can do lockers, you can do inside the building, there's a number of options. So, that wasn't to preclude or to change that.
And then my next one has to do with percentages, and I see Commissioner Baker's going to talk about that, so I'll leave the 50% alone for right now. And then down on D, it doesn't refer to basements and so on.
Where's D?
Page 31 of the AIS.
Over here.
I assume if you have access to a basement parking area, you could put your bikes down there?
Not without, not going downstairs. So, that's always been an issue. So, even when we talk about the upper floors, providing, has to have access via an elevator. So, there's not an assumption that you can carry those bikes upstairs, flights of stairs.
I was actually referring to downstairs.
Right, same.
So, there was an elevator to the basement?
You'd have to, you'd carry it down, flight of stairs or back up.
This one doesn't.
Well, but what about if we have basement parking structures?
Then usually, there's a ramp, and so, we've actually allowed those to be in those, because they're actually accessed via an ADA access. So, either they're accessed via the street ramp system, or there's like a switchback ramp.
I think the only thing I'm getting at is, I've been around this code long enough to know that if things aren't in the code, they can be interpreted as not being allowed.
And you're, because basement's not clearly called out.
I'm just suggesting that, again, you and I can talk about it and remember it, but a decade from now, maybe we don't remember that. Thanks.
So, that was, just so you know, the stairs was the big piece of that. So, as long as we can write that as far as if they have ADA access.
It's interesting, in Europe, where a lot of bike parking is, is they actually build stairs that have ramps associated with it, and you walk your bike down that ramp along the side of the staircase. It works very, very well.
That's true.
Commissioner Randall?
Well, first, with our recent discussions about dwelling units and density and bedroom counts, I want to say I appreciate you putting in the multifamily bicycle parking based on, a little more on the number of bedrooms rather than just dwelling units. So, I'll just put that out there first. And then I guess back to B, to B, that Rick was talking about, do we want, on the vertical parking, I know we've got the seven-foot clearance required for the overhead height, but where we say the space is six feet high, do we want us to be a little more clear that that six feet is maybe either to the hook, or the rack, or the attachment point? Because I know that I've been to vertical parking spaces where they're taller than that, and it's, it's hard to, I don't have a five-pound bike, so it's a little hard to tip it up and get it on that hook. So, might clarify that just a little bit.
Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, a couple of things I wanted to follow up on. Commissioner Duncan said, I think it would be better, instead of putting convenient distance, if you actually set a dimension, you know, like we have a dimension to reduce the open space requirements, if you're within a certain feet, you know, it was a quarter mile, so maybe, I'm not concerned about the dimension, and just, just say what it is, because we haven't, trying to get the code more clear and objective. So, if you mean 100 feet, then say 100 feet, if you mean five, whatever. But I would think you're better off putting dimension, and say that it's measured along public and private walkways. So, in other words, it's not the way the crow flies. So, there's just no question that, you know, even though you have a parking here, and the entrances are all here, you know, theoretically, it's a short distance, but you have to actually walk around 500 feet to do that. So, just, I think it'd be better if we put a number there. And the other area Commissioner Duncan mentioned is this, up to 50% may be tipped vertically or hung. And I have a concern with that because of several reasons. One is, it doesn't accommodate different bicycle formats. So, right now, we have a lot of people that have children's-
Trails.
Trails and carts. You have these extra cycles that are becoming, you see a lot more of those, because they carry more gear, and it's easier to put a child on the back. You have child seats of all different kinds. You know, we don't, we don't have tricycles, but in, if you take a, go to a mature bicycling locale like Netherlands, 40% of the bicycles are tricycles, and they're used by older people.
Now, be careful when you refer to older people.
Or younger people. They're used by different age groups. So, so I would be concerned, I think a more reasonable number would be 25%, because I have, I have this fear that you could allow a lot of these vertical racks, and then we find that they are not appropriate, and they can't be used. Whereas, you can always take horizontal areas, and if you need more bicycle space, you could add some vertical racks. But we can't do it the other way around. Once we've, you know, once we've created these spaces that are smaller and shallower, you can't now accommodate regular bicycles with those. And we just don't have a track record with a lot of people using vertical racks. Even at the university, the majority of the bicycle racks are huge areas undercover, you know, of hoops. So, I think it would be, I think, I feel better if it was 25%.
Or is there a way to get an, some sort of accurate number, that we actually base it on something, facts?
I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't know. But again, you know, judging by, if we judge by Netherlands, 20 years from now, maybe, you know, if we have 40% tricycles, they aren't going to work on tilt-ups, because it's going to be the wrong dimension, and, you know, they're not going to be wide enough. And, you know, again, you see a lot more of these child carriers and extra cycles. My other concern is on 4C. When I looked at the code here, it seems like we reduced the requirements for shelters for short-term bicycle parking. And again, this is one of my p's, because the classic example was PC market. We have this giant new store goes in, there's no covered bicycle parking there at all, zero, you know. And so, it seems to me that, based upon the old code, it would have been better if you said, "If 10 or fewer short-term spaces are required, no shelter is required." So, in other words, when we're building these bigger new stores, we should make sure that there should be some covered bicycle parking. So, I would change number one and two to be, if five or fewer short-term bicycle parking spaces are required, then no shelter is required. And if five are required, a minimum of 50% must be sheltered, five or more.
Commissioner Belcher?
And one more, sorry, one more question I had here was, I agreed with other people that I don't think that it makes sense in the table that this be applied to only multifamily zones within Western University and South University. Again, we have students living in JWN, Amazon, you know, Fairmount, Harlow, and it's, it doesn't really matter whether it's students or not. We're assuming that a large number of students will bicycle, but we're also assuming that, at least in the summertime when the weather is good, other people will bicycle and reduce our transportation demand. And so, if we're building new, this only affects new dwellings anyways, if we're building new multifamily in R3 and R4 zones, then it seems to me if, if we're building large bedroom units, wherever it happens to be, then we should have a requirement that, you know, increase the number of parking spaces. And that would even make sense for families. I mean, if you move in there with a family, a couple, you know, parents and a couple of kids, you might expect you need more than one bicycle parking space. So, I don't think it's unreasonable for new developments in R3 and R4 zones. And I believe that's my concern.
Commissioner Belcher?
Looking at the feedback we've gotten, I would request that you inform both GERS and the PPAC of these proposed changes, so they're aware.
First, we're meeting with VPAC on Wednesday, so I'm going to get gears.
Perhaps add gears to your notification group as well. As to the percentage of tilt-up or hung storage, my experience with the hung ones is, I've got a heavy bike, and I would have a hard time 10 years from now lifting my bike and putting it on a hook. So, at least I anticipate that. So, I would suggest reducing the number to closer to 25% as well. It's not, you've got to pick it up and put it on the hook, and that's the hard part for me. I agree with Steve's suggestion to reduce the minimum number, the numbers of 10 for short-term bicycle spaces to five. I'm struck by how difficult it is, how few spaces are in front of PC, and indeed, your bike's flat when you get out a lot of times of the year. So, I'd change it to five as well. And finally, just to be consistent, do this across the city.
Are you talking about the increase in?
No, the, the standards should apply across the city.
They do. They actually do, so.
But I'm talking about, this talks about-
Okay, that's what I was asking, the chart, okay.
Yes.
Got it, got it.
Make it the same everywhere. Commissioner Jaworski?
I'm basically in agreement with both of the commissioners that spoke, except I'd like to just expound a little upon the chart. It does say it's citywide, and to make this in R3 and R4, I think it should include R2. We have a lot of R2 areas that are all being built to multifamily, which are children, three or more. Children have bicycles, I think, as much as college students. And to say that if they have three bedrooms and a couple of kids, they only get one space, doesn't make any sense to me. They should be the same as two spaces for each dwelling with three or more bedrooms.
Commissioner Duncan?
I'm in general agreement with it, but I'd be interested to know if there's ways that you could characterize different types of, you know, if you're, it seems to me that students would tend to have different kinds of bikes, sort of what you were talking about, more bikes than maybe family projects out in the West End that are in a lower density, where there's more family areas and things. I mean, I'm fine with that idea, I just don't know if there needs to be changes because of the general living characteristics in those areas. And I would suggest that, you know, the university, you can have a centralized room where all the bikes go, but maybe that doesn't work as well for a project of 250 units that's spread out over 20 acres somewhere. It just seems to me that, again, it's that one-size-fits-all, doesn't really fit the use patterns, or do you end up with this, you know, 20-acre project with 250 units, and you get a big room, and it's never used, because I happen to live 10 acres from here? I just wonder about that. I'm for the idea, I just, I don't know how it works. Somebody must.
Commissioner Belcher?
Well, that doesn't require them to put it all in one room. They could still make them adjacent to the units. And the point I was going to make is, you know, we don't have people walking around in the future, making sure that your bike space is actually a bike space. If you decide you'd rather turn it into a closet, you can't.
True. Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, I was just going to mention that the way it's actually provided in Western University now is there's two styles. There's the, you know, there's the, I'll give concrete examples to make it, so there's like Parkside, which is back behind, right south of the West University Park, that has 21 units, and it's got two bicycle rooms split, you know, the east and the west building is the central building, so you could choose which one you wanted to use. So, there's two central bicycle parking areas. And then some of the other units, for example, the one that Dan, the ones that Dan Neal has built- has built, have separate closets for each unit that are designed to take bicycle, a bicycle or whatever, golf clubs or, you know, in addition to other stuff. So there are those two styles and it's not clear, it depends on the developer what they prefer. I think the direction nowadays is the, you know, it's a mixture.
Do garages, do they satisfy bike storage?
If they propose them, but that's pretty rare.
I was thinking, again, I'm talking about.
Multifamily, yeah.
I'm talking about, again, away from campus type projects.
Yes. Absolutely, they do.
Different things going on.
We just have to show the potential to put a bike and a car in the space.
One other thing I realized, I had a note here and I forgot to mention, where you talked about the elevator, I think you covered this, but indeed, we're talking about the elevators, you just, you substitute elevator or ramp, because that would deal with the garage or, I mean theoretically, you might have a ramp going up. It's conceivable you could have a commercial, you know, one-story commercial and a ramp going up to the multifamily above, two or three stories above to some platform. So that way, we don't have to worry about garage or whatever. It's, if it has a ramp to it, then it substitutes for an elevator.
If we allow ramps, do we want to limit to the number of floors the ramp could be? I mean, you wouldn't want a six-story ramp, would you?
Believe me, if you get more than two stories, you're required to have elevators anyways.
Good point. Never mind.
Any more questions on bike parking? Commissioner Baker had suggested that we circle back to see if there was any comments or, I know you have times, but let's hope, and if there's any more comments on open space standards or the allowed intrusions and required setbacks.
Yeah, so I just noticed this recently on the Volta, on the open space standards, on that table there, open space requirements, under R1, the dwelling units per net acre form exemption, there's 12 listed there. We've eliminated the exemptions for R2 or R3 and R4. I'm wondering why we don't eliminate the exemption for R1.
Kind of a couple of reasons for that. One, the original proposal only suggested with the multifamily, so we're kind of keeping in with that theme. But also, if you're going to do multifamily in R1, you have to go through a planned unit development and you get a chance to evaluate, you know, what that particular site's going to look like at that stage.
But if there are 12 units, there's the possibility for an open space requirement.
Correct. I mean, unless they need it to meet the PUD criteria, which, about compatibility and there are criteria about open space there as well, recreation, recreational open space. I don't remember the exact words, but there are criteria in the planned unit development that.
But isn't that even if it's down the street within walking distance, that open space?
I'm remembering one where it needed to be within the unit, it needed to be within the area Crest Meadows. I think this was the one, it needed to be, there was some common open space and that counted, but you also were able to count your own private open space.
Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, I had a similar concern about the R1. It just seems to me as if, you know, from terms of long-term livability, we want, we need to provide open space when we provide housing. And it just didn't seem to make sense to allow the exemption in R1, even though there's some, maybe some PUD requirements. The point is that way, the PUD requirements still have to consider that there is a requirement, there should be some need to provide open space. Otherwise, you're saying that if you're over some density, then you don't really need to provide open space for your PUD. And I also had a question, not so much for C2, which I could understand, but C1, which is sort of the neighborhood commercial, isn't that really what we're considering? When you build over that, and we have a good example in Western University, 17th and Pearl, I mean, the problem we have now is, there's a lot of, there's an abundance of commercial property and there's no market for it. So you find commercial property being redeveloped for residential purposes and you put in a small amount of commercial, and unfortunately, it's an undefined and none one of these, not objective amount, so it could be very, very small. And I'm, so I'm wondering about to see one as well, because if we're going to see a lot of this, and again, the way the open space can be provided is with common open space index and tabios or could be a roof thing or whatever. But the way it is now, you know, if we're going to see a lot more of these Pearl Street type projects, then I think it's important that we consider, and in the long term, you know, in terms of our, that we provide, that we, that they provide some open space along with the project. Otherwise, we're creating a new, we're solving the problem elsewhere and then we're saying you could still, you know, if you, as long as you're dealing with excessive commercial property, you could develop residential without. And I think it's fine to leave it for C2 for obvious reasons. That's my call on that. I'm going to mention a couple of other things that I've mentioned before. The minimum area on page 9.5509, this would be page three. The minimum area for a balcony, I still think, the way we had it, this was where, this was changed from what we proposed. We proposed a minimum, it had to have a minimum area of five by five or six by six, I can't remember quite now. But that guaranteed that there would be some minimum requirement. You can provide, you know, a deck or a balcony of whatever size you want, but if we're going to count it towards open space, we wanted it to at least enclose partly, some reasonable amount of area. So if it's five by five, you could still have areas off of it that would be considered part of it that might be three feet in dimension. But the point is, there would be at least one area that would be, you know, you could get a couple of chairs in. And I, and I think that's, there was one other, and I think, I'll leave it at that for now. And actually, one more, the one, the point that Gordon had concerns about and which was also a change from our code, the way it's written now is some of the common open space, the way it's written now, it has to be on the front, certain percentage of the front setback. And the way, way we wrote it in, when we developed this was, well, if we go back to our goal, our goal was that you didn't put all of the common open space in a courtyard in the middle. And so 100% of the open space for the project was inaccessible to the community, you know, even as visually to the rest of the neighborhood. We wanted a small amount, 20%, to be sort of visible from the, from the street front edge. So our requirement was that sort of 20% of the common open space was contiguous with the front setback. So it didn't say it had to be 20% of the front setback, because you might have a 150-foot project and that would, you know, in other words, the point of the matter was, it seems to me that it gave you more flexibility. And maybe I'm wrong, but that was my understanding of it. The way it is now, it's, you specify it as it has to be, it has to be, so much of this has to be in the front setback.
And it doesn't take into account the size of the project.
Right, doesn't take into account, well, it's by percentage, but I, percentage, but the point is, you, you could theoretically have all this common outdoor space be a whole huge wide area along one side of the building. And it may only about the front setback at the front. But the point is, that would solve our, our concerns in that someone walking by, you would see that there would, you know, there would be this open space. You would get some difference in, you know, in the scale and whatever. So again, I just want to raise that issue because I'm a little concerned that we're, you know, maybe making it, you know, making it less.
That's 2C.
Yeah, and really the intent there is, when we read that what was proposed by ICS, we didn't find that it was particularly clear and objective. We both applied it differently and another person applied it differently. So what we, what our intent by rewriting it was to still, with the same goal in mind, was to still end up with a percentage in that front yard. And we played around with different lot sizes, different percentages, and ended up with the 20%. And it does take into account the smaller lots and the bigger lots, and if you have a corner lot, you only have to do it on one side. So we thought that that was actually, met the same objectives, but was a whole lot clearer than the original proposal. And that's why we went with that route. And we're, you know, perfectly happy to look at another solution, but it's, you know, there's that fine line between wanting flexibility and wanting, you know, something to be prescriptive. It can't be both, unfortunately. And so we're trying to, trying to, I guess we're trying to walk that fine line here so that they do have some flexibility, but there's some other, other words of, that folks have, that would be great to hear as well. Any more, Kristy?
Well, the only other thing I wanted to point out was the comment about the C1 and C2 and not removing that exemption. The applicability for the multifamily standards are, that very example you gave was if the ground floor doesn't have residential units, you're not even subject to multifamily standards. So in commercial zones, you could potentially not even be subject to any of these multifamily standards, let alone open space exemptions, any of it, if you don't have ground floor residential units. And that's in the applicability of the multifamily standards. So that was another reason why we kept that exemption in there. So it's only if they propose ground floor units would you even apply these standards. So you can look at that, I wanted to point that out.
Commissioner Belcher.
I'll take him in order. Mr. Conti asked why balconies can't have independent supports in the definition. Can you tell us why that is?
So what we had was somewhat of a massing issue. So what we have seen from a, from a permit application standpoint, there are many allowed intrusions. So you will have a front porch. That front porch is limited to a height. You can have a balcony, then the balcony's on the second floor. Then you can have eaves or overhangs. It just becomes this constant, so the massing of that entire structure in essence is, for all three or four floors could be over looming in that front yard setback. So the intent by, by not allowing the supports was to reduce the actual massing of that structure. I mean, if you were to look at this potentially and not assume that this was an interior yard issue, you would have those support structures for balconies in the front yard setback that would then be continued all the way down to the ground floor. So instead of not, you know, disallowing the balcony, it was just more trying to control the amount of actual structural encroachment in that front yard setback. So it doesn't limit them from still doing a front porch or a balcony or those things, but then we were seeing then the structural supports going up to the overhangs above. And so everything was, it kept looming forward. And balconies, mind you, are allowed to go all the way to the front yard, not just limited to the five-foot intrusion as well.
I understand that, but you're recluding the idea of having a front porch that has a balcony on top of it.
No, actually, the porch.
If it has the porch.
To, up to the roof, up to the upper above, you know, the overhang portion, is that what you mean?
To the roof and then the balcony could sit on top?
Right, and we have approved, that, we have seen that. So that was, the intent was, because then what becomes that, how does that become not a porch? So what we've seen is exterior access points and they want to argue that that's the front porch because the entrance is now on the second floor. So it's like, well, then that's a balcony with a covering, well, it functions like a porch. I mean, it's their entry point. So there's been that push.
So this is to exclude the balcony to create a porch?
It's tried to, it's tried to very much clarify what is truly intended to be a balcony versus what is intended to really be a porch, ground level, obviously, because it's limited in height to the 15 feet.
Could it still not be a porch if you didn't have the posts? I mean, it essentially.
It can.
It functions as a porch anyway.
It can, but you're limited, you know, to the amount of massing that's in that front yard.
It's not a big issue for me.
Yeah.
I was just curious. As to changing the minimum dwelling units in C1, you know, I'm, I'm remembering the mess we made when we tried to do the nodes and we ended up with the FAR 1.0. I'd rather look at how we developed the C1 along those corridors and like a stall and look at all the issues at the same time, rather than throw a monkey wrench in now that may be a problem later. So I understand the concern, I just think the timing's wrong. Finally, I strongly agree with Mr. Baker that we need to have minimum standards within area for balconies. I really don't like seeing six-inch balconies that don't have, serve no purpose whatsoever other than an architectural design and to claim open space for those. I think they do need to be six foot deep and 36 square foot minimum so they can actually serve a purpose other than looking nice from the outside. And then I would reiterate the question that Commissioner Duncan gave of why just a 42-inch visual barrier between balconies? I think it needs to be at least the stall so that you can sit and have some privacy. So that may be 48 or 50 inches, I don't know, but I think it makes a significant difference. That's in.
You meant sitting down that high.
Sitting down that high, yes. Which is on page 11 of the original, it's.
Page three of the document.
Page three, yeah. B2.
And rail height.
Well, it's private open space screening.
I know, but it's the same, coincidentally, that's.
Is it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner Duncan.
Would you make, you state the comment you made earlier about residential on ground floor, commercial or not, and how there's an exemption or not an exemption?
Correct. So in the applicability of multifamily standards, so that's going to be in Eugene Code 9.5500, subsection 2B, and I could read that to you. It says, "Multifamily standards shall also apply to multifamily developments in commercial zones unless the entire ground floor, with the exception of areas for lobbies, stairs, elevators, and bicycle storage for residents, is in non-residential use. Additional ground floor area used standards in this table, mixed-use development, also apply." So that's back in that commercial development standard where it requires, you know, 60 or 80% of the ground floor in a commercial.
So if we've got a project that's mixed use and it's got commercial in the front and residential in the rear.
On the ground floor?
On the ground floor.
Then the multifamily standards apply.
So the open space would have to be in the front of the building?
Well, they'd have to meet the multifamily standards, so potentially there is the requirement then, potentially unless they're exempt, because we didn't remove that exemption, yes.
But my point is, I'm thinking about, again, our commercial corridors and you get something built along the Amazon where you're going to have residential along the Amazon, but yet the commercial building facing West 11th, wouldn't it be better to have the open space requirements for the people to be on the side where they actually live, not in the front of the building?
But they could adjust that standard. That's just the clear and objective piece of that, is that they could then adjust the location based upon those specific site.
I didn't quite understand that, the way you said that. I thought you said they were going to be required to hit some of these open space requirements, which means we'd have to have the open space 15 by 15 square in the front of the building and so on and so forth.
Right.
And it would seem to me that we wouldn't want to do that at all.
In some of those cases, yeah. So what I, what I was trying to point out was, what we've seen a lot of the redevelopment of commercial and an example would be the courtside apartments on Orchard and then Villard, just south of Market of Choice, they don't have any ground floor residential units. So when you have a commercial zone, they are primarily providing parking, commercial, leased space, and then the upper floors are residential. So then therefore, they're not even subject to these standards.
Mine actually deals with the hope that we start having mixed use, where we have residential on ground floors and areas where it's appropriate for development.
Right.
The only thing that I was going to ask a question on was on page 11 of the AIS or page three of the document, and I'm talking about number, excuse me, D. We talk about private space may be covered but may not be enclosed. Do we have a definition of enclosed?
Where?
Just below the table on open space.
We don't have a definition of enclosed.
The reason I ask that is that down below on number one, it says, "Screening or buffering shall consist of landscaping fences or partitions that physically and visually separate the private space." Wouldn't that be considered enclosed?
So when you.
It seems to me there's, I'm asking if that's a conflict between.
It's assuming that they're side by side and so that the screening would actually occur on the sides, but you'd still have, it would be, you wouldn't have a roof necessarily.
Wouldn't have walls on all sides.
Walls on both sides, or all three sides. You'd have it on two.
Say you can't do that here. I mean, my point was, you can't, you can't enclose it, but you have to do all screening. And I would argue screening also is not only from side to side, but it's also right here if somebody lives across the hall from you.
Okay. So the intention was to, the enclosed comment was that it wasn't then enclosed within the building, like they couldn't say that in a unit was, this is my private open space because they have a back area that they've now enclosed, something like that within the building. So enclosed was, you know, I think our porch definition. So enclosed was, you know, I think our porch definition says it has to be partially open. I think it actually says, if you look at the definition of porch...
Okay.
I think we were just looking up, yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely. I can look at that real quick.
You can do this and this, but you can't do, you can't actually do either one of them.
We're out of time.
I'm done.
Are there still more requests to speak?
There are.
Can we extend for 15?
We won't be televised.
Oh, no.
Well, I'd like, I mean, I think it's important, except possible, to try to...
Semi-enclosed. Will we be recorded?
You know, I honestly don't know. I think we are still being recorded, just not televised, but I'm uncertain about that. I need to follow up on that.
So if folks wanted to pick up the last 15 minutes, they could come back?
I can't give you a certain answer on that.
Could you find out for us?
I can. I mean, I think we can...
Probably come back and talk about some more.
We, we've extended other meetings, so I assume they've been recorded. I can't remember.
It's at your discretion. We can certainly provide a summary of what happens.
Okay. I think we should go for another 15 minutes and see if we can complete here.
You both did what you did.
And I interrupted the discourse between Commissioner Duncan and...
I think that's a good point.
Commissioner Baker had a request to speak.
Yeah, I was just going to comment on the, what was interesting was, I'm using the Seventeenth and Pearl example, because there were two projects developed. There one that was completely designed to working grounds, and then lo and behold, and they had a multi-permit, and then they ended up selling the property to somebody else in a completely new design. So in the original design, normally you do find that in these projects, the lower floor, there's no housing, because between the limited amount of commercial and then lots of bicycle parking and car parking, the first project, all the parking was on the, on the ground level. And double, you know, the double parking for the larger bedrooms, I can't remember what we called it, tandem, a lot of tandem spaces. In fact, I think they were four by four, you know, lots of tandem car parking. The next project was interesting in that there actually is residential on the lower floor. It's sort of like the, if you picture this large lot, because it's like quarter of a block, the part that paces Pearl and goes around the corner a little bit is commercial. And then the other parts, there's, it's sort of like a U-shaped building with separate buildings almost. Some of the other parts, I think, are actually residential on the lower floor, because they have underground parking. So it wasn't the need for the, as much for the surface parking. So again, I just throw it out, it's just, normally, I would have thought that they would always be this case, but you could picture, if you assemble enough property, like they did, they have three or four lots there, you know, you end up with a bunch of stuff on the alley and so forth. You might end up with some first-floor housing, you know.
I just had a quickie comment, and it's, I should have set it under compatible transition. When I look at this picture and I, and I see this great big building next to this single family, it's kind of interesting at Nineteenth and Emerald, I'm just wondering why they don't allow for wider yards, wider side setbacks, give the person more density to build higher in the middle, but where it a butts in R1, and then they could put in some trees or something, which are a lot better than staring at a wall with windows. Second, in relationship to that is, because I was talking to staff earlier about, what do they consider buffer areas or buffer zones? Where I live, we have lots and lots of land that's R1, butting either R2s or R3, R4s. Some have been developed, a lot hasn't, and it seems to me, it would be appropriate now if someone said before they even developed there, that they have, for lack of a better term, a buffer strip, so that you're, so you're, you're really transitioning, and it's not necessarily just talking about, as I've seen with these, all only building height, which seemed to be just talking about the height of the building, rather than the type of development versus what's in an R1 and an R3 and an R4. And there's room for that up in my neighborhood now, and as I can look on the map, and several other areas before these developments occur, to say, to start to put that in now, so that we're addressing that for the R1 areas before it happens, and the developers know that that's what's going to be there. And then my last question was, a lot of these things are going to go in effect and affect multi-housing and whatever, and my issue is, is if the developer, when they apply, say it's needed housing, which of these won't then be something that they have to consider? In other words, they don't need to address that, because they call it needed housing.
Just to clarify on that last point, these are intended to be all clear and objective standards, which is why I'm thankful that you guys are picking apart some of the words here where they're not clear. And so if they're clear and objective, then they would apply to needed housing.
If they're clear and objective?
That's not clear and objective.
What, what, okay, so how do you know when it isn't clear and objective?
That's typically when it goes through the land's application process. Like, we talked about the site review criteria that talks about, we couldn't have a standard in the multifamily standards that said you have to be compatible with the adjacent development, period, and expect to be able to apply that at the time of building permit. We could have that in a site review, but if somebody claimed needed housing, then they get to take a different path in site review and not have that criteria applied.
So we need to, so one would have to have something that's clear and objective...
That's why these are...
Like I was mentioning on buffer strips, before it's even done, so that they could come in with that, and they're not going to be five or 10 feet away from an R1 area.
Right, if there was a 10-foot setback, that's, that's clear. It starts to be when we, we add language around some of these. It is, I mean, writing code is, is difficult, because of, you know, the legal requirements, that is it clear, is it not clear, what does this mean to you, what does it mean to you? So that's why we're thankful that you all are here to point those things out to us.
Welcome to the planning commission, John. Yep. It's clear and objective what we do.
I, I know we had, we had intended to cover the other points that, that we had covered previously to touch on again, and I see we're, we're looking at common open space now? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's what...
That's, so we're there?
Mm-hmm.
And I guess our last item is allowed intrusions?
Yeah, if anybody had any questions about...
Make sure we touch on that, so if there's any other comments here before we wrap up. Well, again, we talk about just the university area, again, I wonder if we should consider the city.
Actually, these were multi...
C on page two.
For all multifamily developments and for all development in the area identified in the map. So that was, if, that's not...
Oh, it's and, you're right, never mind.
Yeah.
Thank you. So why do we need the and, then, if it's all?
Well, because of what we talked about earlier, the duplex issue.
That aren't multifamily.
The duplex in the, in the, right, in the multifamily zones around the university.
And for all development in the area identified, I see. So should it say all development?
Yeah, I mean, check, say what, we'll, we'll run that back by the attorney and make sure that it's, it's clear to her as well.
I mean, it's, it's subjective, but it wasn't clear to me.
Okay, well, that's good. That's why, it's good that you pointed that out.
Other questions or comments from commissioners? Commissioner Baker?
We wanted to think, again, you know, when we looked at this in the past, well, this is following up on Commissioner Belcher's, for all multifamily developments and for all, I mean, what we're really saying is that this is in the R3 and the R4 zones, right? That's what this map is.
Well, it's the R3 and R4 around the university.
Right, but again, when we were saying this, this is where there's development now, but there are other R3 and R4 zones that we've identified that would have similar problems. So I don't know, maybe it would be better if you said all multifamily and all, and for development in, in R3 and R4 zones, and other development in R3 and R4 zones, maybe. I mean, it might, it's probably worth considering, because we're, we're taking away these map restrictions and applying it, because it's, the issue is, these kind of developments in the R3 and R4 zones, whether it's a duplex or whatever.
Commissioner Leidig?
Not on this, I just have a general question.
Are we done with multifamily? Commissioner Leidig?
We have a public hearing next Tuesday, the 6th of December.
Not on this. I don't know if you have one or anything else.
How about anything?
It's scheduled, it's, it's scheduled without, without a...
Oh, then it's not, I don't believe it. No, I don't believe, I'll have Cara confirm that by email.
Oh, excellent.
So many, you just decide to throw one at us from the front of it?
Well, we hold, we hold the time, every month.
Right.
And then we just take it out. So the hearing for this is the 13th.
Right.
Commissioner Belcher? I will not be present for that hearing.
But you plan to watch the webcast, you can participate?
I don't think it's available on the plane.
Well, but it will be avail, it's archived, you can watch it the next day if you plan to participate in the deliberations.
Right, but I won't be able to ask questions for the hearing. Other questions or comments from commissioners? From staff?
Just confirming that I did hear that we are continuing to be recorded, not broadcast live, but it will be available on the webcast.
Very good.
Okay.
And there were no other, are there any other items from commissioners? So at this point, then, I believe we're adjourned. Thank you all.
Welcome again, John. It's too late to wait.
Thanks.